Thank you. Good evening councillors, officers and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. And thank you for your attendance in the gallery. I think it's the first time I've seen so many people in the gallery. So thank you and welcome this evening. My name is councillor Lena Messina and I'm the mayor of Darabben City Council and the chairperson of tonight's council meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome you all to tonight's council meeting. I hope you are warm. I've asked for the heaters to be turned on so you are comfortable this evening. I now declare the evening, the meeting open at 6:10pm. Darabben City Council acknowledges the Wondry Warring people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land and waters we now call Darabben and pays respect to their elders past, present and emerging. Council pays respect to all other Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander communities in Darabben. Council recognises and pays tribute to the diverse culture, resilience and heritage of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people. We acknowledge the leadership of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander communities and the right to self-determination in the spirit of mutual understanding and respect. The health and safety and wellbeing of our community has and will always be the paramount consideration of this council. Council continues to be guided by the government directives and wants to be able to do the right thing for the health and wellbeing of our community during the COVID-19 pandemic. At Darabben, we pride ourselves on being a progressive and contemporary council in the interest of demonstrating leadership. I have high expectations that we'll be professional in our conduct and the language we use throughout the evening and respectful in the debate, in our debate. The chamber or virtually or in person is a workplace and a public space and we have an obligation to ensure the working environment and the public forums are safe for everybody, both emotionally as well as physically. Membership, before we commence, I'd like to introduce councillors and senior staff who are with us this evening. Councillor Trent McCarthy, the deputy mayor.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening. Councillor Demetriadis.
Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Gaetano Greco.
Good evening, Mayor.
Councillor Tom Hannan.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening all.
Councillor Suzanne Newton.
Good evening, Mayor, and everyone in the chamber.
Yes, councillor Suzanne Rennie.
Good evening.
Councillor Julie Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, and welcome everyone.
And our officers this evening, Rachel Olivia, who's the acting CEO, Sam Hewitt, who's General Manager of Operations and Capital, Jodie Watson, who's the General Manager of Governance and Engagement, Shadi Hanna, who's the General Manager of Communities, Vanessa Ptrue, who's the Acting General Manager of City Sustainable and Strategy. And may also reintroduce and welcome Mr John Watson, who's the Minister of Warrnambool Monitor. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to make notice that the spacing of the room is a little bit far for me, so I'm not being able to see the peripheral vision. So I'm going to ask councillors to bear with me when we ask for voting because I cannot see the hands of the two councillors who are right here in the beginning. So I just want to make notice that. Before we commence, many of you, many of you in the gallery tonight will be listening to the debate on the Northkirk Golf Course matter. This item will be dealt with early in the meeting and multiple copies of the officers' reports on this item will be available in the foyer. Thank you and let's get underway. Item number three, apologies. I note that councillor Tim Lawrence is an apology this evening. He may join us a little bit later on. Item number four, disclosures of conflict of interest. Councillors and officers, are there any interests or conflicts to declare?
Yes. I've got a conflict on the Northkirk Golf Course item and I'll mention that when we get to it.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any other conflicts? Officers, yep?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a conflict on item 8.14, the Minor Buildings Trades and Maintenance Works Panel. I know two of the tenderers who tended for the panel and I declared my conflict well before the evaluation.
Thank you. I also, councillors, I also wish to declare I have a general conflict of interest in item 8.1, aged care services, due to my business interest in aged care sector. When we get to this item on the agenda, I will leave the meeting and the deputy mayor, councillor Trent McCarthy, will assume the chair. Are there any further conflicts to declare? Thank you. Item number five, confirmation of minutes of previous meeting. I'm going to ask Mr Mann, make a few comments.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Messina. Councillors, since the distribution of this agenda, council has held a special council meeting on Wednesday, the 18th of May 2022. The minutes of this meeting have been finalised and distributed to councillors and placed on council's website. Rather than formally list these at the next council meeting in June, I seek consent of the council to confirm those minutes this evening.
Thank you, Mr Mann. Can I, councillors, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the ordering meeting held on the 26th of April and the special council meeting held on the 18th of May? That's moved by councillor Williams, seconded by councillor Gaetano Greco. All those in favour? That is passed unanimously. Thank you, carried. The next item on the agenda is item number six, public question time. We do have a few questions, but I'd like to read out some commentary prior. Before we commence, the public question time, please note the following. Number one, public question time will not exceed 30 minutes unless extended to by council resolution for a further 30 minutes. Item number, point number two, similar or like questions will be grouped together and a single answer will be provided. As I invite people to come forward and ask their questions, I remind you that you can only ask three questions and you cannot exceed two minutes in total. And I request that you refrain from introductory comments and background statements. At this point, I'd like to thank those community members who have raised questions about the future of Northkirk Golf Course. We received 21 questions on this issue, which include a range of views, opinions and statements. The majority of the questions have been answered through the consultation process and/or addressed in the council report. Further, many questions will preempt the decision of council whilst these questions will be read out. Officers have not been in a position to develop comprehensive responses this evening. The Northkirk Golf Course matter will be considered and debated tonight by council. Whilst those persons who have submitted questions were permitted to ask the questions, and I'll read out the questions of persons not in attendance, we'll be acknowledging the majority of questions and taking them on notice. All questions will be included as part of the minutes to the meeting and will write to each submitter with a specific answer to their question and these too will be incorporated in the minutes for a future meeting, of a future meeting. We'll, I'll move on to the questions. Is Claire Leyden of Reservoir in the, here this evening? No? I'll read out her question. Can you please provide an update on the planned works at Boulderwood Parade and McMahon Road intersection under the Previous Streets for People programme? Given that the design was planned to occur in 2021/22, I would like to know the timeline for the works to be undertaken and when the local community can expect to be informed about this project. Thank you. Thank you, Claire, for your questions. Design of the intersection of Boulderwood Parade and McMahon Road have been delayed due to drainage issue, which is currently being resolved. The area of the subject to flooding and is subject to flooding and it is necessary to complete the drainage design work first before designs for the intersection can be finalised. Once the drainage issue is resolved, you and your neighbours will be contacted the next couple of months via letter in your mailbox and proposed designs and request for feedback. Next person who's submitted a question is Jason McCullough Thornbury. Are you in the gallery this evening? Thank you. The Keown Park Football Netball Club have been trying to gain access to a set tenancy for grounds and facilities at Donath Ground for one or over two years. We are a club that's almost 100 club members and expect another 100 once our AFLW, FIDA and MASTAS football programmes have a home to work in. Can you please advise why we can't share a winter tenancy on Donath Ground number one where we previously worked with co-tenants there for over 30 years up until the mid 1990s? Lastly, what are the ground facilities options are available for us so we can get our programmes up and running for the community? TW Blake Park, CH Sullivan Memorial Park? Thank you for your question. As per council policy for a seasonal allocation, the club need either written support, it need either written support, affiliation and/or a licence with a state sporting body and/or league. Council officers have been liaising with the club regarding this request and have provided this advice. Council officers will continue to liaise with the club to discuss venue options for proposed programmes. The next question of this evening is from Serena O'Mealy. Are you, welcome, good evening. Good to see you once again. If you could please approach. Serena, I understand you also have a submission for an item on the agenda. Would you like to ask your question, have it answered and then do your submission for the item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Darabben Council's Senior Biodiversity Officer Position has been vacant for around one month. This is a crucial position for Darabben's rewilding programme. Can you please confirm when this position will be advertised?
While the position is vacant, a person has been appointed to act in the role, so there is no loss to the continuity of work. This is a common practice in this sector and the individual in question is highly qualified in the field.
Can you answer the question about when it will be advertised though, please, Mayor?
I'm not aware of that. Can I take that one on notice and get back to you?
Thank you.
The next question?
Notwithstanding the great talent that's on the new Darabben Nature Trust, Darabben Nature Trust no longer has sufficient participants with a deep understanding of biodiversity and/or with environmental experience, noting that there are currently four positions open for expressions of interest. What steps will Darabben Council take to recruit additional people with these skillsets to DNT?
Thank you, Serena. Council has access to several highly qualified and experienced experts on staff and through the engagement of consultations when necessary. The DNT arguments that knowledge by providing a soundboard and critical friendship to council so that it works and is well informed. The current DNT bring a rich diversity of experiences and knowledge to the table, which is highly valued by this council. In considering further applications to the DNT, council will seek to ensure that the skillset of future members complements existing members and staff. Thank you. Would you like to make your submission to an item that you have already?
Thank you. So I'm submitting on item 8.6, which is the renaming of the former Ruthven Primary School. So contrary to Darabben Council's most recent resolution, the members of the former CRG were not consulted about the names for the former Ruthven Primary School until after the shortlist of names was selected. And I do thank the officers for meeting us on site, but it was after the names were selected. Unfortunately, that's not consultation, that's information provision. We're not keen on the name, which means we are one, which is a phrase which is commonly used as a political statement, including in a well-known song. It doesn't relate to our original brief on names for the park, which one of our members represented to a meeting of DACC in 2019. We were seeking names that related to the natural features of the site. Rather than backtrack, we have carefully considered the names provided. The CRG is in favour of the two longer names, one meaning see and do, which is in keeping with the site as a learning space, while the other land people, us, convey something essential about a park where we want the community to be able to connect deeply with nature. It's good for people to be able to learn more about the Warring language. We are concerned that the easier to pronounce name could be more likely to be taken up despite the more relevant meanings of the other two. And many of you will understand the value of making an effort to learn the names from another culture. When my own mother emigrated to this country in the 1950s, she had to change her first name because of the assimilationist era and people's unwillingness to learn how to pronounce it. We need to continue to move past this way of thinking. So the Friends Group asks that the motion be amended to drop Wat Gambo Park from the list and to include a sound file with the remaining two names so that people can hear exactly how they sound before they vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Serena. The next person who submitted a question is Matthew Zammatt of Thornbury. Are you here this evening? No. Okay, I'm going to be very delicate how I address this because I've had to alter it. My questions relate to discussion held during the ordering council meeting on the 26th of April 2022 regarding the Reservoir Leisure Centre feasibility study, specifically to effect that a 50-metre pool is not recommended as an option to respond to the health and wellbeing needs of the community. There are many new migrants in this area who have, may not have experienced swimming before, which is why the report recommends an increase to the hydrotherapy pool and to the learnt to swing pool. The Darabben City Council Towards Equity, Equality, Equity, Inclusion and Human Rights Framework 2018-2029 contains three goals, one of which states we will build council, service programmes, place and spaces that are inclusive, responsive, accessible and equitable and respond to the diversity of needs, rights and priorities in our communities. The measure of this is stated to include indicators and data collection at a service levels. What indicators and data collection were used by Darabben Council to determine that many new migrants in this area may not have experienced swimming before? Lifesaver Victoria and Royal Lifesaving Australia data and reports identify that the multicultural communities in Australia are at greater risk of drowning due to cultural differences in swimming ability and water safety knowledge. This includes visitors, international students and residents who were born overseas. Cheddar and Oak Hill neighbourhoods are high proportion of residents born, from residents born overseas, therefore it is likely that there are new migrants in the surrounding community who have a lower level of swimming proficiency. In light of the Towards Equity Framework, does Darabben Council submit that the prior skills and experience, however assumed, of one particular group in the community should be determined for the provision of public amenities to the community as a whole? No. However, I can confirm that the council plans and delivers community infrastructure in response for the needs of the entire community. The next person who submitted a question is Libby Nisham. Are you here this evening? Nope, thank you. Thank you, Libby, from Northkirk. And this is the question. What evidence is there that justifies the recommendation to keep golf at this location and make only a small amount of land available to the wider community as per option A recommendation? Would it not be better to stand no extra money and put the operator on a 12-month lease? The next question is, have the Wondry Land Council and/or Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee agreed that the recommendation to council is the best use of this site at this stage? Thank you, Libby, for your question. I will take answer one as a comment and question two as a suggestion. For council's consideration, we will consider this matter tonight. You're welcome to perhaps address it, listen to the debate and address the questions based on that. In regards to question three, the report that council includes an update on engagement with the traditional owners. The next question is from James Dawson of Thornbury. Are you here with us this evening? No. The question is, if the proportion of golf course is to be partitioned away for general use, could council consider this to be done in a more considered manner by someone with expertise in golf course architecture and planning? Thank you, James, once again. We've received similar suggestions and we will consider this matter tonight. You're welcome to ask questions after the debate. He has a further question. Why are the recommendations coming from Parks Department and not Sport and Recreation as it is a spawning venue? So what I might do at this stage is put that question over to the CEO, Rachel Olivia.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the question. I can confirm that the two teams within council, so Recreation and Sport and our Parks and Open Space teams, work very closely on this project. We always have one department that takes clear responsibility and plays that coordination function, but I can certainly assure everyone that efforts joined up behind the scenes.
Thank you. The next question comes from Corinne Davis from Brunswick. Is Corinne here with us this evening? The question is as follows. How will council protect social media, social sports from cohorts who aren't interested in cohesive community programmes? Thank you, Corinne. I will take your question as a comment about how important it is to protect social sports. I'll also ask a manager to contact you about your question tomorrow. Is Rachel Goldhurst, Goldlust, sorry, from Preston here? How does council, Darabben Council justify keeping a nine-hole course subsidised by ratepayers who overwhelmingly want access on a regular basis to the golf course? Thank you, Rachel. I've taken your question as a comment and invite you to stay for the debate and decision tonight online. The next question we have is from Aralena Issu from High Street, sorry, from Reservoir. Are you here with us this evening? An apologies if I've not pronounced your name correctly. The questions are as followed, there are three. My question is, on what grounds has the council chosen to completely ignore 10,000 of their constituents? Question number two. Secondly, which Northkirk Golf Club members have made their donations on somewhat supported projects conducted by the council in the last five years? Thirdly, which council members have personal or business relationship with Northkirk Golf Club members? Thank you for your questions. I refer to the GM, Operations and Capital Sam Hewitt to respond to your first question. Okay, over to you.
Sam, the first question, which I think you'll be able to clarify, is, on what grounds has the council chosen to ignore 10,000 of their constituents? I believe it refers to a petition.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you for the reminder. I would like to correct a smaller error in the report, Mayor, if I can. On page 138 of the papers, we refer to a petition that was received by council with 2,289 signatures. In fact, Mayor, there was a petition submitted to the council with over 9,400 signatures and a separate survey with 2,277 signatures. Hadn't been our intent to mislead, but if we have, we apologise, but there was indeed a petition of almost 10,000 signatures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hewitt. In relation to your second question, we will need to take this question on notice, Aralena. And all councils and officers have an obligation to declare any conflicts associated with decision-making. The next question we have is from Craig Burton of Northkirk. Are you in the gallery this evening? Good evening and welcome. Now, can I ask that we perhaps put a clock on the time in terms of the question, the two minutes, please?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you councillors and staff of Darabben. I just want to reinforce that the decision on the golf course is actually a huge decision and that the solicitation for this decision should have been run more broadly. Or rephrased as a question, could you please run this solicitation more broadly and not take option A and defer any decision on this until you have letter bombed everybody in Darabben and no one else outside of Darabben? I would also like to ask if the options put forward to people in Darabben to decide about this could be a little bit more imaginative than golf, a bit less golf, shared golf and no golf, and instead include options like Series 2.0, a putting green for children, a driving range for golf culture and large-scale rewilding and perhaps many other projects, including social housing?
Please. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Craig. We will take your question as a suggestion and the approach is that to the community engagement is contained within the report presented to council tonight and the decision of council will be informed the next steps. Thank you. Can I ask if, and I also like to know and thank councillor Lawrence, and I need to go through the process. Councillor Lawrence, we talked about disclosures of conflict of interest. Do you have any to disclose at this point?
Yes, Mayor Messina, I've got an indirect conflict of interest in relation to residential amenity in relation to Northkirk Golf Course.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence, that is noted and we'll take those into consideration when we open the item. The next question we have to ask is, we have, that's me submitted, and I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly, it's from Rachah Sirata Vazava from Northkirk. Are you here this evening? The question is, what are the proposed pedestrian access points to the new public parkland? Thank you, Rachah, for your question. There'll be one at Mayor's Park and one near Beavers Bridge. There will also be additional access points determined through the fence analysis. The next question we have is from Philip Goode from Northkirk. Are you here this evening? I'll read out your question. Why are we spending Darabben ratepayers' money to benefit Moreland residents? Question number two, is it really worth spending $1 million on a poor compromise? Question number three, is council really that hard up to find things to spend $1 million on? Thank you, Philip. Council's primary focus is on improving the quality of life for the Darabben community whilst there may be a secondary benefit for residents of other locations or localities. The primary benefit is for residents of Darabben. And in terms of your item number two, I'll take that as a question, as a comment rather than a question, and also take that item number three as a question and as a comment. Do we have Nick Verigus from Brunswick in attendance this evening? Welcome. You have two minutes when the clock begins. Good evening, Nick, and welcome.
Good day, Mayor. Welcome, everybody, thank you. I've just got a question about the operational costs or the lack of detail about the operational costs of maintaining the golf course compared to other uses. So first is, what is the financial position of the Northkirk Golf Course operation and the options being considered? Is it insolvent and running at a net loss covered by Darabben ratepayers? And the second question touches on what Craig was talking about, about a lack of imagination in the paper and the options being presented, but it goes to the, sticks with the financials. You know, what are the revenue modelling that has been undertaken to compare continuing golf as the activity on the site compared to some of the other ideas that were presented through community consultation, such as using mini golf section near holes one and two or an outdoor cinema, place for concerts and providing a social enterprise to run the clubhouse at a more profitable way?
Thank you, Nick. This information is contained within the council report and has been made available on your Darabben website. The current operating model for the golf course means that the course is subsidised by council by approximately $150,000 per year and there's no modelling undertaken at this particular stage. And thank you. Is Matthew Faulkner from Thornbury here this evening? I'll read out his question. At the southern end, where a proposal is put to remove an entire golf hole, there remains abundant unused land surrounding both sides of Merrick Creek. This land represents far more unused area than the removal on the entire section of the golf course will ever provide. How does council justify this and its expense in light of the abundant public space already being available? His question number two is, how will council guarantee that this might continue along a full stretch of the proposed public area? In particular, how can council guarantee that the elderly residents of Veronica Gardens will not be constantly disrupted, especially after hours? Question number three, at the Walton End of the proposed golf course, there is a spillway tributary to the Merrick Creek Bracken Creek. In 2020... I don't know if I want to read that out, just one moment. Okay, sorry, I will read it out, but I'm saddened to hear this and I didn't know whether it was factual, so I will address it. In 2020, a child tragically drowned here. This area regularly and spectacularly flash floods often without warning. How does council propose to ensure that no drownings will occur once access is granted at all hours of the day? I'm deeply saddened to hear that. I'm going to ask, I'll address the first two questions and then I'll ask Miss Olivia to answer the third. This item is listed on tonight's agenda for consideration by council. Your comments and questions are acknowledged and will be fully responded by the council officers after council has determined the matter. Riff, I'm going to address, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. What I...
What I am going to do, obviously, in regards to question three, which is a tragic, tragic event and one which we take very seriously, is, following the meeting tonight, I'll ask our general manager of operations and capital to do a review with his specialists about that area and make sure that there's appropriate consideration of mitigating risks. Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, I didn't expect to read that out. Is Melanie De Monaco here this evening? Good evening and welcome, Melanie.
Hi, everyone. My question relates to the report on future options for Northkot Golf Course. It was really disappointing to read that report, have a number of concerns about the lack of information and also kind of glaring errors. So I'm glad you pointed out the error around the size of the petition. My question was around that and why council was underreporting the level of support for unlocking the course. So thank you for the clarification. I suppose my follow-up question there is, what process does council undertake to ensure the quality and accuracy of the reports? Because there are a number of errors and omissions there. So that was my first question. Should I go to number two?
Just one moment, just one moment. Stop the clock, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So essentially, one of my jobs as the chief executive is to be responsible for the quality of advice and public reports, and so anyone who's got any feedback for us, I would welcome it, and I'll follow it up appropriately with our team. Thank you.
That would be great, because it was the largest petition council ever received. So it's, yeah, quite important that councillors and council officers understand what the community is presenting, and we did take a lot of time and a lot of people took time to sign that petition.
Thank you, Melanie.
Great, okay, so my second question relates to the environmental impact assessment that's been undertaken on these options, especially the recommended option, option A. What environmental impact assessment has been undertaken to understand the impact of moving the, reconfiguring the golf course and the impact upon trees and tree removal and vegetation especially?
Thank you, you have another question also, so do you want to ask that? Because we will take them on notice, Anya.
Okay, and my other question relates to the cost-benefit analysis of the recommendations, especially option A, what cost-benefit analysis has been undertaken considering it's suggesting council spends $1 million on reconfiguring a nine-hole course that already operates at a significant loss to council for a very small number of people who come from outside of Darabin and offering very little benefit to local people with a very small park created. So it was around the cost-benefit analysis.
Thank you, Melanie. This item is listed on tonight's agenda for consideration by this council and your comments and questions are acknowledged and will be fully responded to by council officers, as you've heard, and that council will be determining this matter this evening. Thank you for your attendance. The next question we have on the agenda is from Sarah Davy Moore from Northkot. Are you here this evening?
Thank you and thank you for your time. I'd just like to start by, you know, reinforcing the comments that have been made by Craig and Nick and the previous speaker, and in particular, the lack of creativity and options that really look beyond the existing use of the site to what the community is clearly called for. My specific question is, what is the cost to ratepayers of running the Northkot Golf Course each year? And will this cost be higher or lower under the recommended option? I know that there is some detail in this report, but I think as the previous speakers have emphasised, there is not a breakdown of the specific costs associated with the use of the golf course at the site, and there is a real lack of cost-benefit analysis and a lack of transparency and full information about what is used at the site now and what are the benefits and the costs associated with broadening the site for much, many more creative uses that would benefit the community as a whole.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll ask Mrs Olivier to address that question.
Thank you, Mayor. So the report that's in the agenda papers does include costs for the current operating costs as well as option A and option B that are covered in that report to council. You can see the nature of those options in the report, and that essentially provides cost information for council's consideration tonight.
Thank you.
My follow-up question would be that that's, there's figures in there that's not a broad, there's not detail and specific, you know, information that breaks down those costs in the level of detail that I would have thought should be provided to inform such an important decision as this one.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Sarah. Your consideration and your comments and questions will be considered this evening. Can I ask if Carly Crotty, Carl, sorry, Crotty is with us today? No, okay. The question is, has there been any consideration given to restricting golf hours to enable recreational use of the entire course at certain times of the day? For example, late afternoon, early morning, rather than having the facility exclusively allocated to golf? Thank you, Carl. This item is considered on tonight's agenda for consideration. Your comments and question are acknowledged and will be responded by council officers after the council has made its determination. Is Libby Smith here this evening? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My first question is actually very similar to Carl's question that was just put forward, which is that more than 2,000 responses to the consultation mentioned temporal sharing, where the golf course is retained, but the space is used for golf at set times and for the community at other set times. Given this option would involve minimal financial outlay to set up and could be trialled and tweaked fairly easily, why did council not include this as an alternative option? It's mentioned in the consultation report, but it's not listed or sort of explored in any detail.
Thank you. Do you only have one question? Yes.
I have one more, actually. But I'm happy for you to respond or...
As it's been debated this evening, we will take that question on notice and we'll wait for the debate and the council officer. Sam Court, okay, over to Mr Hewitt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, to answer the specific question, a range of options, I think as many as eight significant options were considered. Council was briefed a number of times about those. The more we started to distill the information and understand the feedback from the community, the more we landed at two preferred options, which are those in the report. Of course, it is open to the council to make any decision it wishes, including an option we haven't thought of. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Is Catherine from Thornbury, Catherine Acton from Thornbury here this evening? Does council commit closely to working with residents adjacent to the Northkot Golf Course prior to making any changes to current usage in order to ensure mitigation of immediate and often detrimental impacts of such changes? Previous periods of usage other than for golf have created issues such as trespassing, vandalism, compromised privacy, toileting and noise late at night, among other problems. Residents are not at liberty to leave the area to avoid this park, parkgoers and golfers' area. To date, council has demonstrated minimal interest in considering experience of residents in Leicester Grove, Victoria Gardens Retirement Village and the Mary Green Estate on Beaver's Road who live adjacent to the areas of the course where general access is now proposed. Can councils ensure us that a priority to consider the impacts of proposed changes on these priorities and people and that council officers will work with us to minimise these impacts prior to change use commencing? Thank you, Catherine. I will ask an officer to contact you tomorrow to talk about the questions you've indicated. Is Charlotte Few from Thornbury attending this evening? No? Okay, Charlotte has submitted three questions. What inquiries have been made by council for external fund grant opportunities to support returning the golf course to a green space available to all? Knowing the Commonwealth Government has also estimated $6 million to the restoration of Alstonwick Golf Course as a nature reserve and newly elected Labour Government has committed to a further $12 million. Next question is noting that overwhelming response of Darabin residents seeking a shared option, can council explain why option A is recommended, which proposes a sharing a very small portion of the land as opposed to pursuing option B for only a slighter greater cost, which would make available a much greater area of portion of land for all to use? Question number three, can council explain why despite a huge level of support from local residents and the promise of a true consultation, that proposed option is that which was presented by the golfers at the commencement of the consultation process? And none of those other suggestions for opportunities submitted by residents, including the establishment of revenue streams through social enterprises, hiring a space, have been noted as a consideration in the report to council? Thank you, Charlotte. We would expect to seek support from all other levels of government for whatever direction council sets aside for this evening. I will take question number two and three as comments and council will make its decision tonight. The next question we have is from Tristan Harris from Northkot. Are you here this evening? Good evening, Tristan. I note that you'll have two minutes, and then I'll ask for an extension of time from my fellow councillors to extend the period. So you have two minutes. Thank you, Tristan.
Thank you, Mayor. Council's your say FAQ stated that just 14% of golfers are women and that, quote, "A full gender and equity impact assessment will be completed for any proposals", end quote. Where is that assessment?
The next question.
Second question is, how does the creation of two single-use silos at Northkot Golf Course meet the requirement of council's breathing space strategy on page 54 to make all spaces multi-use?
Thank you, Tristan. We have conducted both agenda and equity impact statement, impacts assessment. It is summarising the public report but not included in full. I'll take your question as a comment and council will consider, will seek, council also seeks to make spaces of multi-use. Thank you very much. Is Emma Jenkin from Northkot attending this evening? Can we have, yeah, an extension of time? You're right. Move, yeah. For 30 minutes? Moved by councillor, any second by councillor McCarthy? All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Is Emma Jenkins here this evening? My observation when the course was opened to the public was that women picnicked, walked, exercised and ran in this space. It is acknowledged that women are underrepresented in public spaces and have limited exercise options. Can you please outline the analysis you have completed on the gender equity of the proposed council solution? What is agenda split on the use of the space and the cost per person per gender visit? Thank you, Emma. Yes, council has conducted a gender impact statement assessment on options. We haven't analysed it in the way that you've asked for, and a manager can contact you this week to discuss the details of that. Is Mark Treggonan from Thornbury here this evening? Good evening. It's been a while, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, you can tell there's a lot of public interest in this, biggest petition ever, a lot of anger in the room. I hope you can feel that up there, can you? I'll continue. So this, it's the subject of a huge petition, a giant survey, a very numerous number of people in a Facebook group, and the clear message coming through is that the residents want more non-golf use of this space, more time to walk, wild bush, picnics, playing, running, whatever. And most of the opposition to the change, the pro-golf sentiment, came from a small number of noisy golfers, most of whom live outside of Darabin. Yet, the proposals being offered, particularly A, offer very little change to the current situation. They get all nine holes, one gets shared, a tiny little bit down the bottom gets open to non-golf use. Given all of this, how can any councillor or council officer, in all honesty, think that proposal A represents the wishes of the Darabin residents?
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, thank you for your comments. The next question is from Yvette Walker from Thornbury. Are you here with us this evening? Welcome.
Hello.
Before you ask, is anybody else cold? No, okay. Just wondered if we shut the doors, that's all. Because I can feel a draft. Thank you, you have two minutes. I'm sorry, I'm feeling the cold.
It's okay, I've got my puffer jacket. Thank you for your time. I actually have three questions, but I'll reduce it down to one because I feel like others, I support what others have said, so I'd just like to acknowledge that those who have mentioned the lack of creativity of the proposal, I support, and I would urge a reconsideration of this as well. But one of my questions is, has the council compared the social, economic, environmental and cultural benefits of maintaining the golf course to providing it for community open space? And if so, how and what data has emerged from this? Thank you.
Thank you. In regards to your question, council outlined, the report outlines the information about the benefits and the costs of options under consideration this evening. It's in the council report. Thank you, Yvette. Please. Thank you. Councillors and also members of the gallery, I understand there is submissions this evening. We will have them at the item, which will be the second listed on the agenda. Just one moment. Sorry, I was trying to skip along. Are there any other questions from the gallery this evening? Thank you. Could you, the lady in the green first, I saw the first hand up, could you please approach? And perhaps if you'd like to come to the centre if you've got any questions. Actually, before we start, can I have a raise of hands of those who do have questions? Okay, so I'll take it on notice in terms of who I see first. So over to you, thank you. Please state your name and the suburb and...
My name's Kathleen Kemp, I'm from Northkot. I also wanted to ask about the results of the gender impact assessment. I don't think that they've been fully, that all the options that were considered have had the gender impact considered. My second question is about the long-term use of this land and whether, for example, continuing to use water from the Mary Creek is going to be possible in a time of climate change. And I'd like to see an option that really looks at resilience from an environment perspective. And related to that is the question of how can we support biodiversity along the Mary Creek? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your attendance, and council will be considering this report to address in the debate a little bit later on. Thank you. I think, I saw, sorry, I don't mean to point, but I thought, yeah, yeah. Thank you. The lady with the green scarf. I don't like pointing, it's rude.
Thank you Mayor, thank you councillors and everyone. My name's Vanessa Walker, I'm a resident of Northkot and I just had a couple of comments that are really reinforcing what a number of people have already said and one question.
Thank you.
Just a few points, one is regarding the lack of clarity around the council officer's rationale for keeping a nine-hole golf course when there were so many other preferences and ideas coming from the broader community. A second comment really again around the poor quality of the two options that are being put forward that seem to be extremely high level and just lacking in imagination and lacking in clear benefits to the community or any other stakeholders for that matter. And thirdly, just the lack of clarity around the decision-making process in regard to the development or not of the golf course overall. So my question really is that noting as the mayor said earlier that it is council's priority to improve the quality of life for Darabin residents, why then are council officers recommending an option that seems to prioritise the interests of a very small number of golf players over the aspirations of over at least 10,000 local residents from diverse backgrounds?
Just one moment.
Thank you, from diverse backgrounds, interests and abilities.
Thank you, thank you, we'll take those comments into consideration and questions when we debate a little bit later on. Can I ask that we have the clock when the person speaks because I'm not aware of how long the person's taking, sorry. The next person who would like to approach and ask a question perhaps, can I have a seatpanks, sorry, at the back there? Please state your name and suburb and you have two minutes on the clock, thank you.
Sure, it's Jen Jewel Brown and I live in Northkot, about seven minutes' walk from the golf course. I was really horrified and terribly disappointed to see the council recommend the first option which had never occurred to me that this would come back as a suggestion or let alone recommended, where the concept of shared use became to, you know, cut off minor parts of the golf course and allow the vast majority to be used by the golf players only. It just horrifies me, I wanted to recommend highly that the biodiversity angle be really prioritised and that certain areas might be off limits for everyone and that the costing of a more generous shared use could be something that is staged, not all at once coming up as millions and millions of dollars and I'm sure that the state government and possibly federal government might help with these costs. But I would like to see the golf course entirety open to the public until say eight in the morning and then at 2pm, you know, until 2pm the golf course is only for golfers and after that time the others can come in and at dusk it would close down for the animals and birds and no light pollution, sound pollution for the local residents. So I just wanted to say, could we please look at staging the costs of this and open up to more options to perhaps get feedback on, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming this evening. We'll take that, we'll take that question, those comments and those questions in consideration when the debate comes, thank you. Can I ask, thank you, your name and suburb, thank you, you have two minutes.
Thank you Mayor Messina, Louise Kenny Shen from Reservoir, bit of change of pace and going on to a different subject, sorry. This is in relation to the Reservoir Leisure Centre feasibility study, could council please provide a rundown of the data pool for collection of data that did lead that feasibility study, including when the data was provided and any efforts that were made to ensure frequent users of the facility were aware that consultation was taking place and ensuring accessibility for all users? And the second question is, what data was used to determine that new migrants in the area, we've kind of already addressed this because, reading through the feasibility study, I didn't see any of it in there but you did explain that there was a different study that was used. But I'm just curious as to how this data has led council to decide that a small portion of the community dictates what the usership should and shouldn't have access to and whether or not that is in line with council's accessibility and equality guidelines in service provision?
Thank you Louise and I didn't recognise you with your mask but very welcome once again to council chambers and ask those questions, we'll take those questions on notice and we'll have an officer call you, thank you once again, good evening. Do we have any further speakers, John? Good evening John.
Good evening Mayor, I have three questions tonight, oh, John Nugent, Epping, I live. Mayor Messina, I have lodged a complaint with the council on the 20, on the 31st of March 22. I received a reply back on the 14th of the 4th that the acting CEO was not replying to my complaint as the former CEO advised me by letter on the 2nd of the 9th, 2nd of July 19. This letter was about the Donovan Reserve, nothing else, you know? On the 26th of the 4th, 22, I submitted a letter to the customer service team for a meeting with the acting CEO and the general manager for governance and engagement. On the 29th of the 4th, I received a letter from the customer service team advising that the acting CEO and general manager for governance and engagement will not meet with me. Mayor Messina, my question is, if the CEO, acting CEO and the general manager will not reply to my letters or meet with me, how can one move on and how can this problem be solved?
I'm not aware of what was the content of those letters and I am only taking what you're saying in terms of.
Well, what it is, they're not going to reply to my letters and they won't meet with me, that is basically what it is.
I haven't seen those letters but I'm happy to speak to you tomorrow Mr Nugent, thank you.
What, you ring me, will you?
I have your number.
Everyone in this council's got my number.
I have your number, thank you.
Next question. Mayor Messina, last meeting, you advised me that your managers would contact me by the end of the week, no one has rang me as yet and not one of your managers has rang me. On the 26th of, I asked the question, re-falling a light on number one oval at Donovan Reserve, this light fell down in July 2019, nearly three years, nearly three years on, I was advised by your customer service team recently it would be another three weeks before this light will be fixed. Mayor Messina, I've got no comment in the council getting this light fixed in another three weeks, I was told this in January last year.
John, John, can I, because we're over time, can I just say that tomorrow, I'm looking at my diary?
All right.
Just one moment, I'm looking at my diary and I'm free at 4.30, can I call you then and we can discuss your items, thank you John.
You want me to read the last?
No, actually I'll discuss your items at that time at 4.30 John, how does that sound?
No, I'd like them to go into the minutes.
Oh, of course, please, but we've gone over time, you've only got two minutes to address council, so can I put those on notice and discuss it with you at 4.30 because we're already a minute over time?
Okay Mayor, but I'll give these questions in and they will go into the minutes.
Absolutely, absolutely, 4.30 tomorrow John, thank you.
Thank you Mayor.
Yes, welcome, you've been patiently waiting there and I've seen your hand.
Thank you very much Mayor, my name's Lindsay Newton, I'm from Northkot. This is about the golf course. I understand two wealthy and powerful organisations were involved in the process of developing the proposals for the Northkot Golf Course and I'm concerned that council has allowed them to override the wishes of Darabin residents. Those two organisations, Golf Australia and the Office of Cat Theophanus, MP for Northkot. Can council officers please explain how these groups were involved and how they affected the process?
We will, I can actually answer one, Golf Australia met with me and an officer, Sam Hewitt, because I noticed that there was some commentary saying that Golf Australia wanted to speak to council and myself and not given that opportunity, so I had a meeting with them, I asked for that meeting and I wanted to address some comments in the community stating that council was receiving some funding from Golf Australia and I can assure you that that's actually not the case, so that's at the extent of Golfing Australia having a discussion with me as the mayor, that's the first question. In terms of your second question, my understanding is that was an announcement made in the public arena through the age that there was some contribution from the state member to address the outcome or the design of the, I can't remember the correct words and I have to be careful because I'll be quoted that I haven't correct the correct words, that there was some financial contribution in the state budget from the state member to address the designing of the course, so that's all that has been undertaken and I can assure you that that's all that's been discussed and everything's been out in the public arena to address those two concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? Yes.
Thank you Mayor, my name's Lauren, I'm a resident of Thornbury, I'm speaking about the golf course. In the report, both the six and nine-hole options, there's a proposed northern park and it's quite a qualitatively poor space, it's a narrow space running along a wastewater drain, the water's polluted, often full of rubbish and foamy waste. If the space must be shared, a quality park on the northern end and southern ends would be enormously beneficial to the surrounding communities, however, the current plans do not provide quality or equitable access for residents on the northern end of the golf course and will any other plans be considered before the layout is decided?
Thank you, we'll take those questions and comments. Thank you, any other, yes, gentleman with the hat, stylish hat, please approach. Feel like a song and dance tonight, clapping in hats. Good evening.
Good evening Mayor, councillors and officers, thank you for this opportunity to address you tonight, my name is Geoffrey Love, I live in St Kilda. I'm a member of the Austenwick Park Association which in partnership with Bayside Council is transforming a former public golf course into a 13.2 hectare nature reserve and wetland. The path from golf course to nature reserve started in 2015 when the then managers, Leisure Management Services, proposed to transform the course into a driving range. This would have meant building, fencing and light towers. The community response was to mobilise against this and council agreed to a consultative process, setting up a deliberative panel comprising, excuse me, members and representatives, comprising community members and representatives from sports and environmental groups. This resulted in a number of options being proposed of which the reserve proposal had over 60% of community support. Council then engaged the landscape design firm who drew up a master plan in consultation with a forum comprising council officers from Bayside and Port Phillip which borders on the park and community organisation representatives. The transformation of the park is well underway and is proving to be enormously popular, attracting volunteers for growing and planting and litter clean-ups in the park and wetlands. Part of the decision-making process, or as part of the decision-making process, we identified that sports clubs excluding golf had used 40% of public land yet were only 10% of the population. Over 60% of those surveyed supported other recreational use of public land. A significant part of the project is to provide rare urban habitat for native species. I've come here tonight to show that.
We're almost at top.
Such transformation can be successful and provide lasting benefits to the broader community, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any further questions this evening?
Thank you Mayor.
I just want to check that we're not submitting and we're asking questions because I believe the last one was a submission, not a question, so I just need to ensure, is it a question?
Three, three short questions.
He was so eloquent and I didn't want to stop him but.
Yes Mayor, three, three short question and nothing to do with the golf course, my apologies to everyone. Regarding item 8.7, first question is, I'm wondering whether the council is aware regarding the naming of a named laneway to Calamata Place, whether the council is aware that over 40,000 Victorians from Greek descent came through Calamata, migrated to Victoria through the city of Darabin from Clifton Hill all the way up to Preston area? Second question is, is the council aware that Calamata in 1941 fed, looked after the and evacuated the first indigenous officer in Australian Defence Force, Captain Reg Saunders, which we would like to honour him at Calamata Place? And the last question is, is the council aware that there's a laneway in the city of Moorland named Spada Place and that we're hoping to acknowledge the Greek residents in the Darabin City Council area of their ancestral home, Calamata?
Thank you, thank you for your questions and comments and council will be considering this item in the agenda this evening, thank you. Are there any further questions? I need to advise that there's only six minutes left of public question time, unable to extend it after that six minutes.
And Mayor, Grant Waisen here, a long-term teacher at Thornbury High School, recently brought out a retirement only this week. Look, I just want to ask two questions really. The first relates to a lot of assumptions that we've heard here tonight and it sort of annoys me to hear that there is a general feeling that somehow the people who are asking the questions assume that they speak for the majority of the community. I know this community very, very well and I do not believe that you've got it right. Everyone I speak to almost for the golf course live here and have lived here for many years, myself since 1966. My first question is really, can you please ignore the assumptions that have been made here tonight when you have your discussion? And secondly, the question is, if we are referring to the cost of running the course, then I would ask that we should make a comparison with the Darabin Park lands as to how much that costs us to maintain because that would be a fair comparison, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, do we have any further questions, we have four minutes and 42 left this evening. No, thank you, thank you very much for your questions for your attendance this evening. Council governance rules permits members of the public to address an ordinary council meeting in relation to matters listed on that agenda with a few expectations, exceptions, sorry. Thank you to those who have registered their intention to do this, we have a list of people and prior to each item, when this is submitted to council, I will invite those who have registered with councils, I invite those to come forward one by one to address councils. So we will do that at the beginning of the item. On to number seven petitions, are there any petitions to be considered this evening? I thought you have them on your desk, councillor McCarthy.
Thanks Mayor, so it's an unusual petition and as councillors would be aware because we have received these electronically but we did have a request to also table them in the council meeting, so I think the motion is that council receives the eight, more than 800 and we've got some more as well Mayor, the over 800 submissions, drawings in fact and written submissions by. students from four local schools, along with some written submissions that have been received as well, by students from four local schools in relation to the Northkitt Golf Course land and their vision for what should happen onsite in the future. So Mayor, I present these. I'd also note that these should also be obviously considered in relation to 8.2, but also 8.3, Mayor, which also refers the report in relation to early years. Infrastructure also refers to these submissions as well as a critical document that the officers have reviewed. So I commend the submissions from over 800 local students, thank them graciously for the efforts and the wonderful drawings that we've received and the written submissions as well, which councillors all have a copy electronically, but this is the full set, Mayor. And I'd move that they be received and that obviously considered, but also that that the respective schools be thanked for their participation.
Thank you, and before I ask for a sec, before I ask for a second, I believe there is a question. I'm just going to go over to Mr Mann to see if I can accept the question. Just wanted to get some clarification.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry to raise this, this is the first time I'm hearing about this petition. My understanding is that these submissions have already been counted towards the results that are on about the golf course. Can they also be used as another petition, another form to submit a petition?
Thank you, councillor Dimitriadis.
Through you, Mayor Messina. I'm also, the first time I've heard of this petition, but that's, that's okay, I don't need to know about every petition. At the last council meeting, I think councillor Rennie flagged that these drawings, these pictures were, had been received. Am I correct in assuming they were the ones?
Different drawings.
Different drawings, okay. Well, they were the ones I was aware of. This petition, as I say, I'm not aware of it being tabled in this council previously. But correct me.
Mayor, if you could just give some context for councillor Dimitriadis. Yourself and myself and councillor Lawrence met with children who actually had coordinated and prepared these, and they presented them to us in hard copy yesterday and spoke to us, and we gratefully received them and undertook that we would actually table them, the hard copies with council officers. So Mayor, councillors have already received all of these electronically. We have received those, in fact, some time ago, but this is the first time that we've tabled these in the chamber, thank you.
Perhaps the question is, have we formally done it in the way that we previously do petitions? However, it's been provided as feedback as part of the consultation paper. Can I have somebody address that question, please? Because that has not been addressed. I see Mr Hewitt standing, so I'm assuming he's going to be answering that question.
Thanks, Mayor. Through you, as part of the consultation stage for the Northkitt Golf Course, we did consider about 700, we understand drawings from young people, and they were considered by our team. Assuming these are the same drawings, then they have been considered, Mayor.
Thank you, so we note that we're accepting the, perhaps the paperwork, but not some, not in a form of petition, because we've already received it to council. So we're going to take that we're tabling them based on the submission process rather than the petition process. Thank you. Are there any other petitions? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Messina. I have got something to present to you from the Nepalese Community of Association of Victoria. In gratitude, it's not a petition, but I just want to draw my attention, I will be giving it to you later.
Thank you, noted. Are there any further petitions? No, thank you. We have a number of significant items on our agenda this evening, and I'm committed to ensuring we deal with the business listed within the time limits we have. To this end, while I'm permitting questions to officers prior to commencing an item on each debate, as permitted by our governance rule, I'll be exercising my right under the governance rules to limit questions and direct the debate commence when I determine sufficient questioning has occurred. I remind councillors that every item on our agenda has been subject of comprehensive, comprehensive council meetings, and you've been given ample opportunity to be informed about the issues under consideration this evening. The first item we, of report we have to consider this evening is item number 8.1, 2021/22 Quarter III Council Plan Action Plan Process Before Including Financials, ending the 31st of March 2022. We have no submitters, but do I have any questions to the officers before I ask officers to come to the table? No, therefore we have no questions. Can I ask councillor Law for a mover or a second or? Do we have a mover? Do I have a motion? Councillor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor Messina, I'll move the officer's recommendation.
Do I have a second? Second by councillor McCarthy, councillor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like particularly to commend all the staff involved in putting this report together, but most importantly, I'd like to thank the many staff across the organisation who have contributed and furthered the actions under the council plan that are described in the report tonight. Despite pretty adverse circumstances, council has made terrific progress in this quarter towards achieving many of the things we set out to do in the council plan. And the report outlines some of the reasons why some things have not progressed potentially as quickly as we anticipated, and it wouldn't be a surprise to anyone to understand that COVID is at the heart of that. We may not now be experiencing lockdowns, but on any given week, there are, there is a significant proportion of the workforce out of action, either in isolation or because they have COVID. And despite, despite that challenge, which is a very real challenge, not just for Darabben City Council, but right across Victoria, in fact Australia, and beyond that, I suspect, we have made very significant progress. So for those who are interested in how council tracks these things, you'll see in the report that there are pie charts for each area of work, whether it's strategic direction four, for example, around being responsible, transparent, responsive, or earlier strategic directions in relation to health and wellbeing or environmental priorities. The report outlines areas that are completed or delivered in progress, deferred and not started. I think this is incredibly transparent way of actually acknowledging where we're at. And I think, all considered, we're actually making pretty good progress towards achieving some extraordinary outcomes. At this time of year, we generally expect that some of the things that happen are not as visible as the actions that we see in the third and fourth quarter. Because often in the first and second quarters, what we're doing is the planning work that creates the foundations to go on and do the delivery in the second half of the year or further into the plan. I'd like to finish up once again by thanking each and every member of the organisation who has worked so hard to achieve terrific outcomes for our council, and I commend this report to all members of the community who would like to know what we're doing.
Yeah, thank you councillor Rennie, councillor McCarthy.
Mayor, I'll reserve my right, a second.
Are there any further speakers? Councillors, I put this item to vote, all those in favour? Noted, that is carried unanimously, thank you. The next item on the agenda is, NAREX's report we have to consider is item number 8.2, the Northkitt Golf Course Shared Use Recommendation. I would then ask for conflicts, as in declared by two councillors, so over to you.
Through you, Mayor Messina. I'd like to say that I own property in the subject area of item 8.2, Northkitt Golf Course Shared Use Resolution. Ownership of a property in the area is an interest I hold in common with hundreds of property owners, and while it is arguable that my interest does not exceed that of the interests held by other residents, ratepayers and electors, I will remove myself from debate and decision on the issue as a precaution against any general conflict of interest I have or may be perceived to have. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Newton, we will ask you to come back in after the debate. Are there any further conflicts?
Yes, Mayor Messina, I have an indirect conflict of, indirect interest in this matter by a close association with relatives who have moved gratefully back into the area, who have a residential amenity issue with this matter. And in the interests of both the Local Government Act, but more importantly, our Code of Conduct, I'll be absiding myself from the debate of this so that the decision can be made and in a, without creating any perceptions of conflicts of interest.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. We have 17 submitters this evening, I'll just wait, we'll call you back in when we finish, councillor Lawrence. We have 17 submitters, you'll have two minutes each, and I'll ask at each time that we commence the clock at two minutes. Can I, I'll call you up one by one, is Ruth Liston here this evening? Good evening, Ruth.
Hi, Mayor and councillors. Ask yourself, if a huge park in Northkitt was suddenly made available to the public today, would council put a nine-hole golf course on the majority of it? Would council fork out $950,000 to split off a small park for the community and spend $140,000 a year to prop up a minority sport played, and according to Capier's report, mainly supported by people outside of Darabben? 51% of perspectives in favour of golf only were from outside Darabben in the report. You've no doubt heard from delighted golfers through the week in support of Option A, and I expect they'll be here tonight, and why wouldn't they love it? It's the same plan that the Northkitt Golf Hub have advocated for all along. In fact, their member James Dawson wrote this week that the plan is so close to their original vision that they felt they had to support it. But I note too that James also acknowledged that the Darabben Residents Group, quote, "is not really shared use", and would actually divide the community into, and I quote him again, "two silos where we can build a wall and throw rocks at each other". Well, James, on this we are in complete agreement. Option A is not shared use. It puts us, at great expense to council, back to square one, with a large part of the local community shoved into a small park while loss-making golf continues. The UNLOQ group entered into the consultation in good faith with the understanding that golf could mean shared, that shared use could mean golf in any form, including more lucrative options like a driving range or virtual golf. We fundraised for and delivered 10,000 leaflets to nearby residents to encourage them to have their say, and 800 children took part with their vision for the space. What a waste of everybody's time to claim that consultation would be genuine and then come up with an expensive replication of what is already in place. As you weigh up your options tonight, remember that this is a decision that will have long-term ramifications for the children and families who live close to the space. I ask the council puts these people at the forefront of their mind.
Thank you, Ruth. We have not, no clapping, please. Thank you. I've asked, is Lisa Marie Spencer here this evening? Thank you, can you please approach and please state your, oh, hello, welcome again.
Thank you, everyone, again. Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of Lisa Marie, who's a long-term resident of Preston and Northkitt, and who has made a submission. Lisa is appalled and quite furious to hear about the recommendations. She has many questions of council on this regarding why, for example, the option of a six-goal, a six-hole course has not been considered? It's just hearsay as a reason for not considering that? Why none of the other options that have been, some of which have been mentioned tonight, have not been considered? It's not a win-win scenario, as mentioned in the report by any means, and it's not really explaining why it's a win-win option. This is an option that is supporting the interests of golfers as, and is, is not really addressing the benefits or the possible potential benefits to the broader community. And an analysis and a proper planning process that really is aiming to achieve some community benefit outcomes is something that really needs to come from this long and messy process so far. And Lisa Marie is, you know, hoping to continue the conversation and to plan this properly for the benefits of Darabben and other local residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, is Jared Locke here this evening? No. Is Bill Jennings here this evening? You're speaking on behalf of Bill, thank you.
I and my family have been residents of Darabben for a long time. I'm here because my husband, Bill Jennings, has had an unavoidable work commitment and offers his apologies for not being here tonight. I read this statement on his behalf. On behalf of the Northkitt Community and Golf Hub, we acknowledge the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin Nation and extend this to any First Nations people here tonight, and local Indigenous people like our patron, Uncle Phil Cooper, many of whom played their first game of golf at Northkitt. Our group supports the recommendation of the council officers' report. We note the recommendation includes the building of a public pathway and an exploration of the potential shared use of the existing buildings on the site. These recommendations align with the vision of the hub. Our group is proud to have participated in this consultation and have parts of our vision integrated into the recommendation. Of course, this could not be possible without the foundational platform of nine holes of golf being available to public golfers seven days a week in daylight hours. We are delighted to see this as a core aspect of the recommendation. A significant group that wins from this report is the ratepayer. The Northkitt Public Golf Course is already nearly profitable, and with the right structures can be profitable ongoingly. The participation numbers are already at approximately 12,500 games played this year to date. This puts the course on track for a third consecutive, record-breaking year of participation numbers. We expect that over 25,000 games will be played this year. Finally, I hold up the Rainbow Cup, which is an inclusive event, welcoming LGBTQ+ golfers and their friends. Mayor Messina, we are so grateful that you attended the inaugural Rainbow Cup Day in February. Whilst our group of tireless local volunteers will keep working to achieve aspects of the hub vision, the Rainbow Cup is an example that hub already exists in spirit. Thank you for listening, and we ask councillors to vote in the support of the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Can I ask, can we please, can we please be respectful of each other and have no clapping? And perhaps no commentary like we show, so we have some respect for individuals, please to have our own personal views and respect that sacred space, thank you. Is Jen Joel Brown here this evening? Okay, thank you. Is Melanie Delmonico here this, yes, she is, yeah.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for the chance to speak on this important issue. My name's Melanie, I'm a long-term resident of Darabben. I've lived here for around 15 years and for the last decade in Thornbury. I wanted to express how disappointed I and many others are with this report and the recommendations. We know that we've had the largest ever community petition to council asking for the space to be unlocked. People weren't asking for a narrow walking track or a tiny slither of space at the southern end of the park. They loved the wide, green, open space that is so vastly different to other parts of Darabben, and wanted an opportunity to access, enjoy and care for this space on a more regular basis. The recommended option in the report suggests that council should spend almost a million dollars to retain a nine-hole golf course that operates at a massive loss and is used by around 50 people a day, and devote just a small fragment of the space to the thousands of local community members who want to use it. The space is around 25 hectares, so around 80% under the recommended option is being locked away for people to use exclusively for golf, many of whom aren't in Darabben, and local people just given a tiny fraction of the space. So we need to clearly ask, does this represent good value to council and to Darabben people? In lockdown, it was such a joy to visit the space with other local people and families and discover the much-neglected Bracken Creek. We ran mini creek cleanup days to try, and also formed a Friends of Bracken Creek group with the support of Friends of Mary Creek. Concerningly, Option A provides virtually no access to Bracken Creek, which is a key feature of the site and valued by local community who are really passionate about volunteering opportunities to look after and help revitalise the creek. I'd ask that you please consider some of the other options in the report, ceasing golf altogether, to turn it into a park, temporal shared space, or even Option B, which provides a much better out. a much better outcome for local people.
Thank you, Melanie. Is Amanda Lawrence here this evening? Sarah Davie Moore? Tim Holdsworth? Oh, Sarah Dav, did you, okay. Tim Holdsworth.
Hello, my name's Tim Holdsworth. I'm speaking on behalf of the Northkirk Community and Golf Hub. There have been a lot of opinions flying around that I'd love to respond to, but that's not what I'm here for tonight. We've partaken in one of the largest consultations in Darabin, and I'm comfortable that my voice has been heard, and I have faith in the report that's been produced. So, for the sake of variety, tonight I actually rise to give thanks to Sam Hewitt and your council team, who have put together, you were tasked with an impossible challenge of sharing a space between two groups that diametrically oppose. Irrespective of the recommendation that you produced, members, parts of the community were never going to be happy. For what it's worth, I've read your report, and I agree with the recommendation, and I hope that it's adopted by council. To the Wurundjeri Woiwarrung people, I thank them for their guidance along the journey, and I respect their wisdom to maintain an overarching position on this land. To Golf Australia, I thank you for levelling the playing field for the silent majority against a noisy minority. And finally, to the community, our mayor and councillors, many of, many of whom have given their heart and soul to this issue. Due to its divisive nature, some people will walk away disappointed tonight. I'm hoping it's not me. But I hope tomorrow we can come together again as a community, and we can share this space in harmony. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Carl Crotty here this evening? Libby Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. I just wanted to take particular time to thank councillor Messina, who has really, oh, Mayor Messina, who's gone above and beyond to take the time to listen to members of the community broadly, and really at all hours of the day and night and weekend. So thank you, councillor Messina and all other councillors. I've been a resident of Thornbury for 17 years. I live close to the golf course, and before lockdown I had never had the chance to go inside. And I just wanted to emphasise that this space has so much potential, and making the space more accessible to the community does not have to be an expensive exercise or a huge additional cost to council. The site already operates at a loss each year and has for many years. If there is a cost to council for the site, council should be supporting future options that support the maximum number of community members to access and benefit from it, rather than a small group. Surely the most financially prudent option is to convert the park, convert space to parkland, create income from the existing buildings, and provide the community with compelling opportunities to interact with the space. You don't need to spend lots of money to create a brilliant outcome for the community. And I urge councillors to consider the option of opening space to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Charlotte Froh here this evening? Darcy Jones? David Giffoid? Tristan Harris? Yep. Mark Trigottin? Yep. Yvette Walker? Yep, thank you. Thank you for your submissions this evening. Councillors... Sorry? Ah, sorry, what was your name? You're not listed for this item, I'm sorry. That was for questions, perhaps. Yep, we can, yep, sorry, are there any other submitters, people wishing to submit for two minutes and who have listed their names? Okay, so we have two? That's it? Please approach, sorry. I've read out the names of those who registered prior. Good evening and welcome, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. I strongly urge all councillors to put aside for this item any petty considerations and specific or narrow interests, and instead to grasp what is a wonderful and really quite rare opportunity to make a decision that is brave, ambitious, far-sighted and future-focused, one that will provide enormous benefits for decades to come for all the people of Darabin and indeed of Melbourne and Victoria. Please, make this land, this public land, publicly accessible for all residents and people at all times, and for all recreational, educational and cultural uses. Such a decision is entirely possible and feasible. It can readily lead to many very positive developments and related benefits, and potentially to state, federal and philanthropic funding to support council's initiative. All that is required is for each of you to do the right, the progressive and the considerate thing by releasing the golf course for true and broad public use. I'm confident that should you choose to do so, history will look on your record of public and environmental service with the very highest regard. Thank you.
Please, please, can you, I've said it three or four times, can you please show respect to this council and other members of the gallery, perhaps, who have shown courtesy? Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, councillors, Darabin staff and fellow residents. My name's Luke. My partner and I would be what's commonly referred to as apartment dwellers. Apartment living is great, but it's not without its trade-offs. Space is obviously the biggest one of all, and natural open space in particular. Quiet, calm, natural outdoor spaces are so important for our health and wellbeing. I don't need to tell you this, it's obvious and everybody knows. As Darabin grows and in particular corridors in Thornbury and Preston and beyond become home to thousands and thousands of new apartment dwellers just like us, individuals and families, council must deliver open space to support their needs. I call on this council to be truly visionary and leave a legacy of a Darabin where everyone can access high-quality, natural and quiet, calm, open spaces, regardless of, regardless of the type of housing that they inhabit. For this reason, I call on this council to direct officers to go back to the drawing board and look at opportunities that are available through the Northkirk Golf Course project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further submitters this evening? I'd like to thank all the members of the gallery who have reached out and reached out to councillors via email. I've received many of you, lots of texts, lots of calls, as like my fellow councillors. I want to thank you for your interest in this particular topic, and note that we have listened to the community on many occasions, and this is one of the ones that's an important decision-making process tonight. Questions, councillors? Do we have any questions to officers before I ask officers to come to the table, or are we going straight to the debate? Are there any questions to officers?
I'm sorry, Mayor, in light of the petition, I do have a question for officers. Just one, one question.
Can I ask officers to, just one moment? Note that we do not take questions once we enter into debate, hence why I've asked officers to address any questions from councillors prior. Councillor Dimitriatis?
Thank you. So in light of these drawings that have just come to our attention again, I note there was approximately 800 children who drew a drawing about what they wanted to see at the Northkirk Golf Course, and from what our GM said about these drawings, that they were included in the officers' results, which I believe was a one-to-one waiting with an adult submission, I believe. My question is, what checks were undertaken to check that these drawings were not duplicated from the same child or from the same household? Because I note that there were 4,000 submissions that were excluded based on submitters submitting from the same household or from the same IP address. So how have we assured that that same process was also conducted for these 8,000, of these 800 drawings that I believe just have a name and an age? Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, we took the drawings at face value. So we had understood that these were young people wanting to contribute to a consultation process for an important space. We took them at face value, and they've been included as such.
Thank you. Are there any further questions to the officers? Thank you, officers. As there are no further questions, councillors, do I have a motion? I saw three hands pretty quickly, and the first one I saw was councillor Greco. So councillor Greco, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I do have an alternate motion, which is your alternate motion, councillor Messina, which I would like to put forward, and it'll appear up on the screen for everybody to read.
Can we highlight the difference between what's in the council report? And is item number three, commissions a report to examine the condition of the buildings on the site and how these buildings could be used in to activate the space and encourage further shared use, and be the opportunities for private investment or a public-private partnership to develop a commercial and/or social enterprise venture for the site, including hospitality and events? Is that correct, councillor Greco?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor Messina.
Thank you. Do I have, I'm going to step back because I, do I have a second, a second by councillor Dimitriatis? Would you like to speak to your motion, councillor Greco?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Messina. First of all, I'd like to thank the members of the audience for their contributions tonight, their questions, and also their submissions. This has been a really telling time for council to consider a very important issue. Also, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank our officers. It's taken a lot of their time and also a lot of resources and a lot of their work. Councillors, what we have here is, I think the community has spoken in relation to this issue. If we look at the survey that has come back, and the survey overwhelmingly, over 80% of the survey recipients, or not recipients, but the survey indications to us, have showed that we need to go down the path of shared use. We had 7,000 surveys, and we had 70 presentations here at council. If you have a look at the report, based on what the report says, just over 6% said a park only was the option, and a further 10% to that 6% said that we should have non-golf uses for that, for that open space. So therefore, the overwhelming result of the survey is that the community wants shared use. We need to listen to the community. That provides us direction on a lot of the things that we do, and I think the community has spoken on this. The next point I would make is that I do believe that this is a win-win situation, and why is it a win-win situation? Because it delivers nearly six hectares of new open space for general community use in the park, in that area. And that equates to a large park area for that space. And that's a park area that some areas in our city do not have access to the same quantity and quality of open space. And there I'm thinking of Preston West and Reservoir South, that hardly have any open space. So there's an issue of equity in relation to where council focuses attention on creating more open space. In relation to cost, the Option A is the one that provides the least cost. I would say also, not having, not having, keeping the status quo, it actually provides the least cost, but Option A, I think, is the best next example in that it provides the least cost compared to Option V. And the other thing I think that needs to be said is, councillors, when we are approached with decisions like this, do we say to a soccer ground or a football ground that when the licence expires that we can no longer, we should turn that into a park? This is the type of situation that we have. And the final comment that I would make, and we just received an email from Rod Quantock, who says that we need to not unlock the park because, not unlock the golf course because of the biodiversity in the area.
It's time, councillor Greco, thank you. Councillor Dimitriatis?
I'll reserve my right, ma'am.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hannon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to thank the many people who've come here tonight and on a cold night, and the many thousands of community members who took time and effort to make a contribution in this subject, starting with more than 9,000 people who, as we've heard, kicked off the debate with a petition and a survey, hundreds of schoolchildren and many more from a wide range of perspectives. Thanks also to the council staff, who undertook a massive job consulting with the community, very skillfully providing options and working very faithfully to follow council's direction and provide always fearless, frank and impartial advice. I'm sorry to say I'm speaking against this Option A. I believe it would be a significant improvement from the status quo in terms of providing an increase in land to the community, but, however, I don't think it goes far enough, or as we've heard from some members tonight of the community, doesn't take advantage of the opportunity that we have in front of us to consider new and different uses of the land for everyone, particularly women. A couple of points I'd like to address that have come up tonight. One is that by investing in this space, somehow we're taking away from spaces elsewhere in the community. We have a very ambitious breathing space strategy, open space levy on the way, hopefully, to address other areas. So it's not right to say that by investing in this area, it's somehow a cost to other areas. Certainly, secondly, I, I think there's a lack of science in some of the claims about golf being the best outcome for biodiversity. There's been some studies.
Please.
We could do a lot better to preserve the natural environment. And thirdly, I'd just like to say that we continue to welcome the ongoing contributions of the Wurundjeri Woiwarrung people, as traditional owners of this land, to the debate. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannon. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rennie?
I have just sent an amendment to council business, EMT and all councillors, with apologies that this amendment comes a little late. The amendment is to number 2A in the motion, which would be to seek a briefing from officers on terms and conditions of a golf course management contract for the course, including options that might activate, activate the course for golf prior to 3pm and non-golf options after 3pm.
Is that acceptable to the mover and the seconda?
It's not acceptable to the mover.
Do I have a seconda for, I'm trusting you're moving that amendment, and we're looking for a...
Yes, I'd like a seconda for my amendment.
Do I have a seconda, it's seconded by councillor McCarthy? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you. It feels perhaps as though people haven't been standing in the same room, listening to the same feedback from the community tonight. It's very apparent to me that Option A is not the preferred or desired option for members of our community, that in fact it's a profoundly disappointing and inadequate, insufficient option. And in fact, it provides nothing to the community that they don't already have, because for members of the community, like myself, who frequently walk along the track that already exists... exists, there is absolutely nothing in option A that is essentially any different from the access that community members already have and have had for many years. We would be naive if we believe that locals haven't been using the path already. And so, keeping that in mind, what we know is that the community have clearly, with the largest petition that has ever been given to this council, larger than petition on parking, which caused council to flip in minutes, the community have told us very clearly that the current situation, which is essentially what's proposed in option A with a few tweaks, is inadequate and does not meet community need. And so I'm proposing something else. It's clear that there's a desire from some to maintain a nine-hole golf course. It's a desire I do not share, and I do not believe the need is there. But I think it returns us to a point where we should look at temporal sharing. That is to say, that golf does not have to be played for every hour of the day, and that in fact, golf is not played there much at all, would be my observation, based on the empty car park most of the time. And so it would be very worthwhile opening the space up in after-school hours and later on afternoons, on weekends, and enabling the community to use the space in that way. I hope that everyone will actually think deeply about the messages we have from our community, about the fact that 800 schoolchildren drew designs of this space, which had them having cart wool spaces, spaces for cubby holes, spaces for running around, spaces for bush play, spaces for slippery slides and circus play. So many creative ideas, none of which are enabled by option A, but which could be enabled through temporal sharing, as I've proposed with the amendment that I've put up. I would flag that if the amendment isn't successful, I will be voting against option A. And I have prepared an alternate motion, which would see the entire space as a non-golf space returned to community use for open space.
Thank you. Just one moment, I just want to read. Can I just confirm that that is correct, councillor Rennie? Because I...
Suits a briefing. So I didn't plan, I'll just go back to the original. B was also in there. There was two B. I didn't intend to remove B from number two. So two B would remain as is, but two A would read as per...
Terms and conditions of a new golf course management contract for the course, including options that might activate the course for golf prior to 3pm with non-golf options after 3pm. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the B, item B, can we have, please?
Yeah, item B would not change. It was as per what was already there.
But we need to insert it because I... And then I need to ensure that that's what councillor McCarthy would be seconding. So can we please insert item B?
Just to clarify, I don't believe there was a two B in the motion that councillor Greco moved, not according to my page here.
Oh, apologies. That's possible. I was looking at my on the screen up there. So if there wasn't a B, that might have been captured further down in a different point. That's fine. We might have a version control issue with what I was reading.
I need to just make sure that I've got the right bearings.
Mayor, I can confirm that the agenda is listed on the screen.
Can I just also do that? Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Just one moment. Can we please have what was on the screen before prior, please?
Mayor, I believe I might have confused things by not looking at what was on the screen, but looking at what was in here.
Condition of the buildings... There actually is a two B item. Are you removing that?
It wasn't my intention, but the two B wasn't on the motion that councillor Greco moved.
It was replaced with... Yes, but no, there is an additional. I just need to go back. Councillor Gre... Councillor Rennie, there was an addition that was proposed.
Mayor, I think I have the answer. What was in two B in the council report that we have online is actually now in number three. And so the same point that I was referring to as two B is captured under number three there, in relation to the condition of the buildings.
That's what I wanted to ensure, that commission to the report to examine was added. Thank you. Councillor McCarthy, is that... Are you seconding that proposed amendment, alternate amendment put up by councillor Rennie that was not supported by the mover and the seconda? I just need to confirm that.
That's correct. If I'm correct, if what I see on screen is that it retains your point, but it also adds councillor Rennie's point about the 3pm piece.
Yes, thank you. Councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak to it?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you councillor Rennie for taking the initiative in relation to what has been, I think, a really practical suggestion put forward, I believe by Jen Gill-Brown this evening. And I want to thank Jen in relation to her statement, because I think it says something about the generosity and of spirit that people bring to this issue, and that we can all, in fact, consider as how we find a way forward on this issue. What the amendment does is that it effectively takes the concept of sharing and doesn't just look at it from a spatial perspective, but looks at it from a temporal perspective. Now, I know that there is going to be someone that will speak against this, so I'm going to rebut what I think is going to be the argument against, which is that if you make the space available that is otherwise used for golf, therefore, you are going to create a situation where people are going to damage the greens. Can I just say, that argument, I think, is based on a flawed premise and on a lack of trust in our community? Councillors, I, every weekend, I spend time at sports fields in Darabban and outside of Darabban in relation to the sport where I am a coach. And I have to say, I see the custodianship that our community and other communities take in relation to our open green spaces. And I see the care that people take, and I have trust in our community, that if we were to adopt this strategy, if we were to actually have a course management model that actually enabled broader community uses after 3pm, that actually enabled the 800-plus students and children in our area to do exactly what councillor Rennie has described, then we actually work towards an outcome of shared use. Councillors, I appeal to you to please support councillor Rennie's amendment. It's a way forward in relation to the use of the space that brings our whole community together. It's about sharing. It's about a demonstration of our community, our capability to find a way forward. And I commend the amendment to you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillors, I will take it to the vote if there's going to be no further speakers. Are there any further speakers? No? I will take that amendment to the vote. All those in... Oh, do you want to speak?
Is this a rider reply? Sorry, I'm a little bit...
No, there's no rider reply. It was an amendment by councillor Rennie, seconded by councillor McCarthy. It's an addition. So I'm asking for further...
So if I speak to this amendment, then can I speak to this amendment?
Yes, you can. Yes, yes.
So I'm voting... I'll be voting against this amendment. Firstly, why have we chosen 3pm? What's to say 3pm is the time that we need to be stopping at to have golf and putting it, making it a public course? 3pm, it's a random number that's just come up. This is an on-the-go amendment. It's not something that's been considered. We have discussed this issue for a long period of time. And here we are with 3pm, just coming up randomly.
Tone, please, councillor Dimitriades, your tone.
Thank you. So we're talking about lack of science. I mean, who here is an expert in biodiversity? Certainly not me. And I can't say I don't know anybody else that has that on their resume. The community has told us very clearly what they want to see at this space. It's the consultation results are crystal clear. It's a huge consultation. We haven't done this sort of consultation anywhere in Darabban, yet here we are with the biggest consultation done in Darabban.
Councillor Dimitriades, your tone, please.
Trying to come up with a 3pm amendment. So I'm definitely not in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dimitriades. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. Yeah, I'll be speaking against the amendment. And the reason why I'll be speaking against the amendment is firstly for the reasons that there's been no prior discussion or debate or advice given to us about what the appropriate time would be to shift the use of the golf course to public use. Furthermore, advice that has come from, to us from our officers in relation to time use, our officers have recommended and suggested to us that that is a very impractical way of going about having shared use. And the experience of that has been in relation to other golf courses where that's been done, where it's impractical to shift from one use to the other use. And it actually puts in frustration both of the users in regards to that, and unnecessarily could create conflict situations in terms of the use. It's not a practical way to go. I believe it's a large-ditch desperate effort to try and put up an option which is ill-conceived, ill-researched, and without any substantiation to that actually be practically applied.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Thank you, councillors. Are there any further speakers? Councillors, as there are no further speakers, I'll put this amendment to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Rennie. All those against? That's councillor Dimitriades, councillor Williams, councillor Greco. That's three, four and three against. I have the deciding vote. And one, two, three... Four, sorry. That's been carried. That now becomes a substantive... I've got to get my maths right. That now becomes a substantive motion. Can we please have that up on the screen? So we've heard from councillor Greco, councillor Hannan and councillor Rennie. Did you speak to it with the alternative? Or did you just flag an alternative?
No, I spoke to the amendment.
The amendment, okay. So we've heard from councillor Greco, councillor Hannan and councillor Dimitriades have reserved their, her right. Do we have any further speakers?
Mayor, I've got another amendment which I've circulated to councillors. And it probably shouldn't come as any surprise, because it's a variation that councillors would be aware of. And that is to replace point one with the wording which has been circulated that delivers option B.
Thank you. Can we have that circulated?
It has been circulated.
No, I meant, sorry, can we have that on the screen? Is that acceptable to the... Oh, sorry. Can I just confirm? That's different to... That's vastly different to the movers and the seconda. So I'm assuming it's not acceptable to the mover or the seconda?
Mayor Messina, no, it's not acceptable to me.
Councillor, do we have a seconda for the amendment by councillor... Seconded by councillor Hannan. Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. So I take on board everything that's been said this evening. And there's been a range of views expressed. But what has been expressed consistently, I believe, Mayor, is a desire by the community. And when I say the community, I'm referring to local people who had both the joy and also the desire to experience this wonderful space in all the ways that we've heard described and all the ways that are described in these pages, Mayor. And in doing so, I propose that rather than adopting option A, which would deliver a smaller part of the site for broader community use, that rather we go for option B. Option B, Mayor, it is by no means for me the perfect solution, but it is the best one we have on the table at the moment. And I think delivers the best possible outcome in a financially prudent way. Option B is comparable in costs, Mayor and councillors, in relation, compared to option B, sorry, compared to option A. But what it does, in fact, is that it delivers vastly more open space for the community to experience this wonderful, wonderful place that has been cared for. And to go to the point of caring, Mayor and councillors, I want to take up the challenge, I think, that was presented to us this evening, which is about community custodianship and community engagement with this space. We've had the formation of the Friends of Bracken Creek and a strong desire to engage with the creek, to engage with the area that is directly south of the creek. And I think we've, fair to say, also the area to the north of that. I know amongst councillors that there is not support for engagement across the whole site. And I don't think it's, that's worth debating that point. But I think there is a way forward, councillors, in relation to the site from the south of Bracken Creek, from Bracken Creek to the immediate south, and of course, to the other section that is referred to there. Ultimately, this land is not our land. It's not anyone's land. It is Wurundjeri land. And so what I'm really interested in as well, Mayor, is the opportunity, I think, to support community engagement with this space, to support indigenous engagement with this space, to support, you know, some of the wonderful ideas that are not expensive, that are actually about kids engaging with natural environments. It's the bush kinder experiences that we know thrive in the Darabban Parklands. They thrive in Merrick Creek. They are starting to thrive in other parts of Darabban. The extraordinary opportunity that we can make available as a city to more people. And I think this is a compromise. It means that golfers continue to be able to operate north of the creek, Bracken Creek, and of course, the broader community can actually have access to the south of Bracken Creek and support its rehabilitation, Mayor. And I think also support a future which is about sharing this space and about optimising the community use and having a much more diverse engagement with this space that includes children, includes women, includes people for whom stick and ball golf is not their desire, but engagement with this wonderful space is. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Or councillor Hannan, would you like to speak?
Nothing to add, thanks, Mayor.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Williams?
Firstly, I'd like to say thank you to everyone involved, especially to the many hours that our officers have put into this. And secondly, I would like to say thank you to all the submitters and everyone here this evening for putting their hearts and time towards this issue. This is no doubt tonight will be making one of the biggest decisions that we will make on this council possibly this term. For five months, we've heard feedback from the community and the public survey, which also included two public hearing sessions in February 2022. There was a significant public interest in the future use of the site, and the response varied. There is no evidence... Sorry. However, overwhelming of the feedback recommends for an option for shared use for the site to increase open space and to retain a nine-hole golf course. There is no evidence from our officers that this council can support a six-hole course that is going to be profitable returning for investment. But I have no doubt that a six-hole will only include half its revenue. It won't be profitable. And in fact, it will only cost council possibly more money in the end. In reality, at this report that's come to us tonight, and for the many emails and exchange amongst officers and councillors to run a successful golf course, it really needs to remain as a nine-hole golf course. I feel comfortable with the officers' reports. Therefore, I will be supporting option A and will be rejecting tonight's amendment. I feel that our officers who have become experts in this field, I have to rely on their knowledge and the fact that we do not have any other reports for what's come to this evening with the amendment. I feel I cannot support it, especially when it only Especially when it only comes a couple of hours prior to consideration.
Thank you. Before we proceed any further, I'd like to address councillor, sorry, Stephen Mayne had a question to the officers, was, just want some clarification in relation to point number seven, if that contradicts the amendment? So if that, if this amendment from councillor McCarthy contradicts the original item number one?
Through you, mayor. No, item seven can remain, should this be councillors' wish, to retain six holes north of Bracken Creek, we do have to do work on a fairway. We would still need to adjust at least one tee and possibly the greens. So I don't think it's inconsistent, mayor.
Thank you. So we've heard from councillor McCarthy, councillor Hanan seconded, and we've heard from councillor Williams. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, mayor, just very briefly. I just heard comments that option B would be financially prudent. But I just want to draw councillors' attention to what the report actually says. The report says that option B would be $50,000 more costly in terms of putting option B into effect. And also that there will be extra costs incurred in relation to the maintenance, the future maintenance, $50,000 or more in cost in relation to the future maintenance. So it's not financially more prudent. And the other point that really needs to be made is that option B is considered a quite a substantial change. And as we learnt this afternoon, major changes to that, to the golf course are expensive. And so I don't think it's correct that the assertion that's been made here tonight, that option B provides us a more financially prudent way forward. In fact, it's a more expensive way forward and to go forward. And I'm particularly concerned about this, councillors, because like I said when we were first, when I first moved the motion, there's a question of equity associated with this, with what we do under council. There are areas of Darabben, in the north of Darabben, in the more traditional working class areas of Darabben, where open space is a luxury. There is very little open space, particularly in your ward, mayor, in the Preston West area and the Reservoir South area. I just ask people to have a look at our breathing space policy and have a look at the maps there and that open space there, there's hardly any open space. So why I'm mentioning that, there's a question of equity here, councillors. If we want to bring all the community along and if we want to provide for all of the community, we need to ensure that we prioritise where the council spend goes. And I'm really concerned about the ensuring that areas with socio-economic disadvantage do not get further disadvantaged as a result of the council spending money in areas where they're not priorities. I grew up in Northcote, I've lived in Northcote for over 55 years. And I know that in areas like Reservoir West and Preston West, there is a dire need for open space and infrastructure spending.
Thank you.
We have to be very prudent in the way that we spend our money.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you. There's a few things that have been said that I believe need to be corrected. One is the idea that golf is financially viable on this site and that, you know, nine holes makes money and six holes won't. Let's be clear, councillors, this golf course has been costing council money for more than a decade. There is no evidence that will stop costing council money, whether it's six holes or nine holes. We have two public golf courses in Darabben. One makes us money and returns a profit. It's an 18-hole course, which we know from a point of view of serious golfers is preferred, but also equally available to recreational golfers. One that has consistently, for more than a decade, cost council money. So if the cost was actually an issue, then perhaps we'd be better not looking at golf at all. And as I said, I did flag an alternate motion which would get rid of golf from the site. It is true that the cost of maintaining the open space that would be liberated were we to go with a six-hole course would be greater. But the cost of maintaining six holes is less than the cost of maintaining nine holes. So more for open space, less for golf, or less for open space, more for golf. The net difference is $50,000. But importantly, the real difference is that instead of locking it up for 100 people, we open it up to 1,000 or 10,000 people. And that, I think, is worth the investment. If I could pick up this block of land or part of this block of land and put it in East Preston, I would. But land doesn't work like that. And I was the first, not so long ago, to say that council should absolutely purchase creekside land near Wood Street and that that should become more open space in that area. I leapt at that opportunity and some of my colleagues did not. So I think there's a few things that have been said that needed to be corrected.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hanan? I'll put this amendment to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Hanan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Rennie. All those against? That's councillor Williams, councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Messina and councillor Greco. That item has not been carried. We go.
Mayor, I have an amendment to the substantive that I've just circulated.
So this is an addition to?
It's actually the same. It just removes the 3pm option because, and it makes it inclusive. So it says include options that might activate the course, but it doesn't specifically say 3pm and it doesn't specifically give a time. So it leaves it open to discussing options as to what that could look like.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I request we get some governance advice? Because I believe that to be directly counter to the motion I moved, which just put in a time.
Just one moment, yeah. I'll just wait.
Mayor, sorry, could I, you could also remind us who the second of this motion is, please?
Nobody is yet.
No, the original motion, the substantive motion.
Councillor Hanan was?
No, no, the substantive motion.
Oh, it was councillor Greco, then seconded by councillor Dimitriatus.
My understanding under governance rules, mayor, is that a second cannot move an amendment to a motion that they've seconded.
Just one moment. We just need some governance advice, Mr Mark. First and foremost, the amendment by councillor Dimitriatus. Have you got a copy of that, Mr Mark? Can I circulate that to you?
Through you, Mayor, Member Messina, yes, I have seen the amendment. It was emailed to me. Council officers are going to place it up on the screen. And I'll then perhaps give you my view about the validity of that amendment.
Mr Mark, a question's been raised about whether it can actually even be placed because councillor Dimitriatus was the second of the substantive motion.
It was two questions. One was can councillor Dimitriatus make an amendment? Because she was the second of a substantive motion, as indicated. And thirdly, does it contradict the terms of the amendment from councillor Rennie? And if it does, I guess I'll be flagging, does any other councillor want to make that minor amendment?
We'll just wait till we get it up.
So cold. Councillor McCarthy is correct. Just need to, if councillor McCarthy is correct, therefore we cannot accept it. Based on item number 4.73, an amendment may be proposed or seconded by the council, except the mover and the second of the original motion and the chairperson. So therefore I cannot accept the amendment, the minor amendment. We've heard from councillor McCarthy, councillor Hanan, councillor Williams, councillor Greco and councillor Rennie. Actually, we didn't hear from councillor Hanan. Did you want to speak to it?
Is this on the substantive?
It is on the amendment that was put through by councillor McCarthy.
There's been.
We voted on that, I'm sorry.
Sorry, mayor, I think I haven't actually spoken to them.
Sorry. Councillors, so councillor McCarthy, so we actually already voted on that. We go back to the substantive motion, which is the original, what was moved by councillor Greco and councillor Dimitriatus with the additions from councillor Rennie. And we have that up on screen. And we heard from? Councillor Greco, councillor Hanan and councillor Dimitriatus reserved her right. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers? We put this to the vote. All those in favour of this?
Mayor, I have a, don't I have a?
You know, um, yes, you do, yes, yes, you do, sorry.
There's no right of reply, it's been amended.
Oh, it's been amended, sorry. Councillor Greco?
Mayor, I think I have a, I may have a right of reply in relation to, so I was the original mover.
It was an amendment, so you don't. Are there any further speakers? I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? That's by councillor McCarthy, sorry.
Just so we're clear, we're putting the substantive motion to the.
Yes, we're voting on this, yes. So councillors, we're voting on what is on the screen currently. It is an alternative motion moved by councillor Greco and then some amendments from councillor Rennie. And it's now the substantive motion. All those in favour are what is on the screen. So I'm going to give councillors a few minutes to read what is currently on the screen. Okay. I noticed councillors are texting. Can we please read what's on the screen? Thank you.
Mayor, I reserved my right and I haven't spoken. I spoke to the amendment. So I believe this is because.
Yes, you can, yes, you reserve your right, that's correct.
Was it, I think you were going to say whether there was anybody else that wanted to move my amendment that excluded the 3pm?
I heard from nobody, I give those options, I gave those options, I heard from nobody.
I just thought you mentioned it, but you didn't actually ask.
Does anybody want to move the amendment that was circulated prior by councillor Dimitriatus? I did ask that. Now, you're actually moving it, there's no second. So you're moving it, yes. There is councillor Dimitriatus cannot move because she is the second of the motion. So again, I ask councillor Dimitriatus, please, can I do one thing at a time? Thank you. So I've got, I'm going to go to 10. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. That is lapsed. Now, we go back to the substantive motion. We've heard from councillor Greco and councillor Greco moved it, councillor Dimitriatus reserved her right. It was moved, the alternate was moved by councillor Rennie. And we heard from councillor Hanan. So councillor Dimitriatus, would you like to speak to it? Because you didn't speak to this substantive motion because you're the original second of the motion.
Yes, I would like.
You have, you have two minutes. Can we put two? Two minutes.
So through every motion this term, Darabben has resolved to have shared use of the Northcote Golf Course. Furthermore, Darabben's council plan clearly states that we unanimously voted to have a shared use of the Northcote Golf Course. And having, so this, what's more, as a result of the consultation have finally, which have finally been made public are very clear. And this, and there was 2,985.
Tone, please, can you mind your tone?
There was 2,985 submissions supporting golf only. There was 2,782 supporting shared use, making a total of 55,767, which is 89% supporting golf or shared use. Only 697 submitters supported converting the course to a golf course, and that's only 10.7%. So when we've got councillors saying that this, that we need to listen to the community, we really do need to listen to the community.
Councillor, please, your tone.
That's 89% that have said that this needs to be a golf only or a shared use option, not a park. So in terms of this particular motion, I am not in support of the 3pm option that's been given because there's no evidence to say that, that that's the right time. I would prefer to leave that open to a briefing so officers can actually look into what the best time is, if that's the proposed time going forward. And I support the recommendation for a nine-hole golf course, which is in line with the consultation results and the overwhelming support that golf continues on this site. So I personally cannot turn my back on what the community wants and what the consultation results have said, which is a huge number of submissions that were taken, that were presented to us.
It's time.
Thank you.
Councillors, are there any, there aren't any, I'll put this item to the vote. All those in. I did give the opportunity to speak and you didn't take it and that she was, and councillor Dimitriatus reserved her right. Can I just check? Councillor Williams, thank you.
I think it's important that we need to consider not putting restraints regarding times. When people go and play sport, we don't go tell people what time they need to be back inside their home. I think that it's not very encouraging that we're putting all these restrictions in reference to an open space area. It's really disappointing that I stand here this evening, that councillors are trying to do all these amendments here this evening at the last minute prior to, or during, right on the table at council. I find it very, very disturbing. I'm struggling to show that we are actually meant to be working together as a team here. And certainly, it's not showing that here this evening. I think it's really important that we need to consider, particularly coming up, that we have a new tender that we will be going to tender towards later this year, that we don't put those, I guess, restrictions on because it will impact future tenders that come and operators that would like to operate there.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you. I would have to say that it is my strong desire that this motion tonight, notwithstanding the fact that I have put an amendment which has been accepted and for that I'm very grateful to those councillors who supported it. It would be my preference that this motion not be successful. Because this motion does not accord with my vision for the site. And I don't believe it accords with the vision for the site of a significant portion of the Darabben community. When I think about what could be in 20 and 30 and 50 years' time, I can imagine another series-type place. I can imagine a Heidi, for those of you who know Heidi, and the beautiful grounds of Heidi with Sculpture Parks. I can imagine a cultural hub for the Wurundjeri Wurung people, which could be the jewel in the crown of Wurundjeri land. There are many things I can imagine on this site which fill me, which would fill me with pride and joy at what we could achieve. It could be the Botanical Gardens of the North showcasing indigenous plants and protecting biodiversity. That's the conversation I'd like to be having. But we're having a conversation about shared use. And so in the spirit of shared use, I have suggested an amendment which I think actually reflects what shared use is meant and what the community is here today to hear in terms of shared use. Most of our sporting fields around Darabben involve shared use. You think about the football pitches, the soccer pitches, the people who are out there every morning with their dogs throwing the ball and every afternoon the kids are playing soccer. The footy fields where people are running and walking and they're playing football. Or they're having a casual game of touch footy before or even in halfway time. Or they're having a casual game of touch footy before, or even in the halfway time of a formal game of football that's underway. Shared use is a reality for most sporting fields across Darabben. But maintaining nine holes and excluding others is...
It's time. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor McCarthy?
Um, thanks, Mayor. It's a difficult issue, I think, for councillors to come to terms with, given the range of things that we've heard tonight, which can all be tested, but we don't have time to test them. So what we do need to test is, can we move from where we are at the moment, which I think is a fundamentally unsatisfactory situation, where 25 hectares of land effectively locks out anyone who does not play golf? And for me, that's an unsatisfactory situation. I share councillor Rennie's aspiration that in decades to come, and I would like to think in years to come, people will look at this site and go, wow, what a wonderful space that engages, connects and involves the whole community. That's not an option that we can have on the table right now because it's clear that it doesn't have enough councillor support to get over the line. And I need to respect that because not all councillors are necessarily going to come at this from the same perspective and with the same priorities. But I would say, and if there's one thing that I think we all need to be conscious of, that governance and politics is the art of the possible and you see what is possible in the context of where you are right now. And what we have right now, councillors, is by no means my perfect outcome. I was proposing a different configuration that took us right up to the creek. I think eventually you will see something like that or something beyond that, councillors. But that's not where we are tonight. Instead, where we are is an option that gives some access to public land, some access for the community, but also gives access to the community from 3pm onwards. By no means is it the perfect outcome, but it's the best one that I think we're going to achieve this evening. And if I'm to be true to what the students have told us, they want to engage with this space and I trust them to do so, and I trust that we can make an outcome as is on-screen work, Mayor. And I thank you again for your support for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers?
Members, I just want to understand whether councillor McCarthy was speaking for or against the motion.
Yeah, you didn't state that, actually.
Sorry, I think it was explicit, I'm speaking in favour of the motion as the best possible outcome we can get.
Yes, you did, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Okay, before I put this item to the vote, I'd like to say a few things. I often, first of all, I want to thank the... I've got three minutes, two minutes. I want to thank the officers who've come through with considerable amount of community feedback to collect this report. I want to commend the officers for all their hours and their dedication, the questions. We've had several briefings on this over a number of months, so I want to say thank you. To the community members who've participated with the online surveys, the discussions, and I've had many discussions with community members, especially in the last 24 hours and prior. I want to thank a couple of young ones, Maddie, Charlotte, Emmett and Little Luna, who I spent the afternoon for about an hour with yesterday evening to address some of the concerns. This is, for me, it's about a win-win. What's a win-win for the golfers? What's a win-win for the community? And what's the longevity of this site? What does it look like? I know there's been many questions that have been addressing about the lack of open space in Preston and Reservoir, and East and South was nominated. Yes, the breathing space attracts that. For me, it's about what makes economic sense. That's why I included an alternative to the officer's recommendation to look at a business model so that there is some income that's been derived and there's going to be a space for facilitation for community to connect. I think this is the best that we can achieve at this particular time. Not everybody's going to be happy with this, but I know that my golfer friends that I've considered and spoken to, they generally get up in the morning and play golf or they go about lunchtime. Now, the overarching issue for me is, of course, what's mentioned in the report, and that is that council has a broader resolution on the 26th of April relating to the land across Darabben and which seeks to explore handing back land and responsibility for the land management using respectful partnership engagement approach. Now, of course, this is what I'm seeking, an economic win for the community and an economic, social and an environmental outcome. So before I put that to the vote, I want to thank everybody for your attendance tonight. So I'd like to put this motion to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Demetriatus, councillor Messina. All those against? That's councillor Greco and councillor Williams. And I'm abstaining. So we have, that motion actually has been carried. Thank you very much to the community that's come along the journey. There's more. This is just the beginning, no doubt. We will make this landmark. To me, it's history in the making and I note no doubt that that'll be open space in time to come. But when that time is, I don't have a magic wand, I wish I did. Thank you very much for your attendance and for supporting everybody. Thank you. I'm going to address and have an adjournment of 10 minutes. We'll be back at 8:55. Thank you, councillors. Thank you and welcome back, councillors. Before we continue, I just wanted to note a token of appreciation that was submitted by councillor Tim Lawrence. I'll share that with everybody. It states that token of appreciation presented to Darabben City Council in appreciation and recognition of their valuable contribution to support the Nepalese Association of Victoria and the wider Nepalese community. Thank you very much, Ray Goranghi, who's produced that, and to councillor Lawrence to present that to council. Thank you. Councillors, the next item we have on the agenda is item 8.3 before. I asked councillors, are there any questions to the officers for this particular item? If not, we'll go straight into the motion. Thank you. Councillor Greco, do you have a... Are you... Yep, moving a motion, which is?
I'm moving the officer recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second to councillors? Councillor Rennie?
Yep, that's moved by councillor Greco, seconded by councillor Rennie. Councillor Greco?
Thanks, Mayor Messina. I'll be really brief because I'm conscious of time.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the officers for the enormous amount of work that they've done in preparing this strategic document. It's an early years infrastructure planning framework for, basically for the next 20 years. And it basically outlines what the council's contribution and commitment is going to be in relation to early childhood education. And particularly what it does, it sets out a plan on how council can stay in the space of providing and assisting in relation to community-based early childhood facilities. We know that there's going to be an increase in population in our area and that will also bring with it a demand for early childhood education places. And we know how important that is between the ages, up to the ages in the early years in terms of the formation of children and their opportunities later in life. And what's critical here and why I'm really excited about this because it's a long-term commitment by council to stay in the space of early childhood education, which I think is critical, and also all the surveys and all the information that we've received is that the community wants more of our service relative to, if you like, the services that are provided by the private sector. And I think that that's quite telling, particularly for a council because we do provide quality early childhood education services. So again, I commend the report. It's a roadmap for the next 20 years and we'll be constantly revisiting this issue as we make infrastructure and investment commitments in the coming years. So I commend the report and the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Councillor Rennie?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Are there any further speakers? I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. Can I just thank the officers and all involved? It's such an excellent framework and we look forward to the evolution of a 20-year cycle. Councillors, the next item on the agenda is item number 8.4, which is defibrillators in Darabben. Do we have any questions to the officers? Is there a nun? Do I have a mover of a motion? Councillor Williams? Councillor Williams, what is your motion?
Officer's recommendation. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Newton.
Councillor Williams, would you like to speak to it?
I'd just like to say a big thank you to the officers for the report. For the intent of the report was to, for council, to locate all the defibrillators in Darabben and to have them registered and also to seek ways of relocating and improving accessibility for the defibrillators so they could be externally mounted on council assets and making them more accessible to the public 24/7. I am a Reservoir resident and I do have a rare heart condition and I'm very passionate about making Reservoir one of the safest areas to have a heart attack. As you know, that sudden cardiac arrest actually continues to be the leading causes of hospitalisation and death in Australia. It claims 118 lives every day, approximately one heart attack every 10 to 12 minutes. Reservoir is actually currently one of the most highest places in Australia to have a sudden cardiac arrest in Victoria by postcode. So try not to have a heart attack in Reservoir. So what we're trying to do in this report, we're actually trying to get as many defibrillators out on the street so our public can have accessibility to it. It also will reduce the survival, sorry, it will reduce death for those having a heart attack because every minute that passes, it actually reduces 10% of chances of survival. So I won't go on any further apart from, I want to say a big thank you. Well, actually, I'll make a... We do actually have 29 defibrillators at the moment that's on council-owned buildings. We do have one that's externally at Reservoir Neighbourhood House and within 24 hours of that being mounted, it was used on the day that we had the Fuse Festival and it actually saved somebody's life. So it does save lives. Currently, officers are going to be, have allocated just over $10,000 towards further assessments and consultation towards our tenants to ensure that we can install those defibrillators externally. And it'll be ongoing, so it will continue on in the coming years. So money will be put aside for our budgets to ensure that we continue not only implementing new defibrillators, but ensuring that we try and make them externally as possible.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Councillor Newton?
Nothing further.
Are there any further speakers? Before we put this item to the vote, I just want to recognise the important contribution of a particular officer whose last day it is today here at Darabben City Council. I want to say thank you to the enormous contribution to the Darabben landscape and her wealth of knowledge that she has contributed over 13 years. I want to acknowledge Jess Fraser. So Jess, thank you very much for what you do, what you've done and I look forward to hearing for your future developments and what you're going to achieve at your new workplace. Thank you very much. Can we give her a little? Thank you, councillors. Can I put this item to the vote? All those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. The next item on the agenda is 8.5, Interwork Governance Review. Are there any questions to the officers? As there are none, I'm going to ask for a motion, councillors. Councillor Rennie?
I'll move the officer's recommendation.
Councillor Lawrence, you're seconding? Thank you. Councillor Rennie?
Um, thank you. I'm actually really pleased that this item is coming on to the public agenda of a council meeting because councillors would remember that a year ago or so we dealt with this item in confidential business because it related to our role in Interwork and the fact that council determined it was appropriate to relinquish its formal role in exchange for what I think is a deal that is very favourable to the Darabben community, which is a significant ongoing investment in the Inner North Community Foundation. Interwork was of its time, I think, an example of council's extraordinary innovation and desire to drive change for young people particularly who were struggling to find work. It was a collaborative endeavour between Moreland and Yarra and it was such a successful business that it took on a life of its own and became not just about youth employment locally, but turned into a large and sizable national employment outfit that no longer had its primary focus in our municipality. And therefore, it was really inappropriate for council to stay involved in the same way at a governance level. But out of Interwork grew the Inner North Community Foundation, which retains an extraordinarily local flavour and which contributes significantly to the social fabric of our community and to the area and space of philanthropy. And so it's terrific that through this agreement, the future of Inner North Community Foundation looks very rosy and they will continue to work locally and Interwork will be free to continue its national business and we wish them very well. I think this is a really amicable parting of ways, I suppose, but with that ongoing legacy of the community. For community members who have been aware of the work of Interwork and the Inner North Community Foundation, I particularly commend this report to you. It does make public a decision of council that was private at the time.
Thank you. Councillor Lawrence?
Um, yes, I'll just be brief because councillor Rennie's summed up this quite well. Yes, Interwork originally started as virtually a three-council apprentice group training outfit. And obviously, we have a focus in the kind of industries that are within the Inner North at that time. It's not only succeeded in terms of being a major trainer of young people and skilling up people, it's also got the Inner North Foundation, which is virtually like another community grants scheme equal to the councils. And of course, it's now branched out across the northern states, the eastern states, Tasmania and many other places with other organisations that had different focuses on training or different regional focuses. And on top of that, there is actually migrant settlement projects and organisations that are now amalgamated into this whole training conglomerate. So it's an incredible social enterprise when you look at the complexity of it today and it's paying us, going to pay us back for our community dividends. But more importantly, it's actually built a national organisation achieving the kind of results that this council's aligned with.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers? I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, councillors, that's carried unanimously. The next item on the agenda to consider is item number 8.6, the renaming of former Ruthen Primary School site. Do we have any questions to the officers? There are no questions. Do we have a motion, councillors? Councillor Greco?
I'll be moving the officer recommendation there.
Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Newton. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thanks, Mayor. Look, again, I'll be very brief. I think the report outlines the approach that we're taking in relation to the renaming of the former Ruthen Primary School site. I think what needs to be noted, the essential elements of this, is that what this motion does, that it starts the process of renaming this particular site. It's a bit of a convoluted process, nevertheless, it's a process that we have to go through. What's happened so far is that we've requested the Wurundjeri Corporation to give us a list of names that it would be appropriate for that site, and they've provided us with five names. And why we asked the Wurundjeri, because it's based on a previous motion and a previous recommendation by the advisory group that we have an Aboriginal name for the site. So the Wurundjeri came to us with five names and then, as part of our process and to respect the Indigenous Australians, is that we asked the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee to have a look at those five names and then they've suggested that we put three names forward for community consultation. And these are the three names that we've chosen that are in the report. As was mentioned earlier here tonight, the friends of the Ruthen Group, they have some objections in relation to one of the names and suggested that we only put two of the names. I think that we should be respectful of the five names that the Wurundjeri council or corporation has put forward and also be respectful of the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee and in terms of their suggestion of putting three names. And I think it would be a bit problematic and premature for council to overturn that decision and exclude one name when the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee has suggested that we put three names forward. The other thing that I would highlight in this report is that we'll need to go through an extensive consultation process and I won't move this as an amendment, but I'll just throw this up as a suggestion for officers, particularly when we're dealing with the consultation process. I'm just a bit concerned about the online survey and the voting poll that would be taking place, particularly in that area of Darabben. I'm very familiar with that area, I'm in the board council and there's a very, very high concentration of people from an on English speaking background. So a voting poll and online voting poll, I'm not sure how well that would work, notwithstanding all the attempts that we're going to make in terms of getting that vote. So what I would suggest, and it's open for discussion, we could talk about this at briefing, is to use multilingual officers perhaps to go around and obtain people's views in relation to a voting process because I think that would attract more engagement and more input from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Mayor Messina, I'll be brief on this as well. So this is something that I've been involved in since I first ran for council in 2016. We were deciding whether or not to purchase this land before I was on council. We've come a long way since then. There was a council plan that talked about potentially having a building on this site that then didn't happen as the community was really strong in saying that's not what they wanted. It's come such a long way since then and I think this is one of the final pieces of that puzzle and I was listening to the Friends of Ruthen Park person, Serena, who was in the audience before, and I do think it's worth considering whether we can have an audio of the options so that people can hear what they sound like as well and I'm looking forward to seeing what people think. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Newton. Are there any further speakers? I'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. The next item on the agenda is item number 8.7, naming of unnamed laneway, Kalamata Place. Do we have any questions to the officers? No questions, do I have a mover? Councillor Dimitriades?
I'd like to move the officer's recommendation.
Do I have a seconda, councillor Rennie? Councillor Dimitriades?
Thank you, mayor. I'm really excited about this report. After a year of advocating for this unnamed laneway in Thornbury to be named Kalamata Place, the report coming to council recommends just this. I'm really happy to support the officer's recommendation in naming the laneway Kalamata Place. Thank you to everyone who made submissions and to the officers, including Chris, who has worked on this. My understanding is that the multicultural social club, Pappaflesis, who had made numerous applications to council over the past three years to suggest that the laneway in question be named Kalamata Place, they hadn't received their correspondence at consultation was underway, however, have since sent their submissions to all councillors in support of the laneway naming of Kalamata Place, as have other multicultural organisation residents and local business owners, such as the Greek Orthodox Community of Melbourne and Victoria, the Thessaloniki Association, White Rose Reception, the tenant business owner currently situated in this laneway and many others, all in support of the name Kalamata Place. During the consultation, we have also seen support from community members for a Warangri name and as a Darabben councillor, I am proud of our commitment to the naming policy and traditional names. Just today, we passed a motion to consult three wonderful names in the Warangri Warong language for the former Ruthen primary school, which we just heard. Furthermore, in recent months, we have also named the Narangerry Stadium and the new Wakwak Bridge between Darabben and what is currently Moreland, but will soon have a Warangri Warong name as well. And during this term, I fully expect that we will continue to work with First Nations to name spaces and in the Warangri Warong language. Darabben's road and place naming policy, in particular section nine, states that in naming a road, consideration should be given to the cultural and ethnic diversity of Darabben, its migration history and multicultural groups and Kalamata Place is the perfect fit for this laneway because as we've heard and read from various submitters, since the 1950s, thousands of Greek migrants have settled in Thornbury and Northkirk from towns in Kalamata and the Pappaflesis Club has been situated at Two Good Street for over 30 years, whose membership largely comprises of residents from the city of Darabben and who have added to Darabben's cultural richness and vibrancy. Therefore, in keeping with this longstanding policy as well as council's equity and inclusion policy, which includes migrant communities, I would encourage all councillors to support the name Kalamata Place that recognises the contributions that the Messinian Greeks have made to the city of Darabben. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rennie.
No, councillor Dimitriades covered it very well.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco?
I really feel compelled to say a few words about this. Look, I think it's a great achievement on the part of council to put forward the name Kalamata and I note in the report that there are no objections. And look, I've lived in Darabben for over 55 years, even more, I think, and I probably can count only maybe in one hand or less the names of various here, streets, places of migrant names. And I think that's really unfortunate that we have that situation and, you know, migrants have been present here, particularly in Darabben, working class suburbs of, you know, Northkirk and the others, and they've been present here for 70, 80 years and have been a substantial presence in this community. And I think it's only opportune that we start thinking about naming areas in Darabben as they come up and thinking about also the multicultural makeup of our city. Obviously, I strongly believe that we need to name places, particularly places of significance in terms of giving them Aboriginal names, but we should not forget also that we should look at the contribution and also naming places of migrants. I think when you look at the city of Darabben and many other places, a lot of the names are Anglo-Celtic names, which I don't think reflect the multicultural and the diverse nature of what this city is. And I think we should make more effort and more stride in the future of naming more places to reflect the people in the community that have made this place their home, have a sense of belonging here and they've contributed enormously to the growth and to the wellbeing of this city. So I commend the motion.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? I just want to add, I just did a quick Google search and you said it was from Messinis in Greece? That's where my name comes from. I had no idea of the connection, but I just did a quick Google search. Things that you learn on a daily basis. Councillors, we have a motion and recommendation. It was moved by councillor Dimitriades, seconded by councillor Rennie and spoken by councillor Greco. All those in favour of the motion? That's been passed unanimously. Thank you, councillors. The next item on the agenda was item number 8.8, risk management policy. Do we have any questions to the officers? Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Hannan?
I'd like to move the officer's motion.
Do we have a seconda? Councillor McCarthy? Councillor Hannan?
Thank you, mayor. It's pretty straightforward, the motion, but just in terms of the risk management policy itself, this has been prepared through a lot of work by staff and also reviewed in a briefing by councillors and by the Audit and Risk Management Committee. I'd like to thank them all for their work in preparing this document. So the purpose of this document is to ensure that council has a systematic approach to dealing with risks and setting our tolerance levels in advance so that internally and externally it's quite clear where council is prepared to accept some risk which is inevitable in the wide range of things that council does and in certain areas where there is no tolerance for risk or very low. It covers a wide range of things from finance, IT, health and safety, you name it, across the broad range of things that council does. And one thing I'd like to note is that importantly, the risk of climate change is incorporated into the plan and its impacts on our community, as in fact is required by the Local Government Act. Quite rightly, the plan points out that council cannot address these risks on our own and council has quite a low appetite for environmental risks that affect our community. However, we have fairly high level of risk appetite in terms of taking bold actions to address the climate emergency, which again, I think is quite right and I'd like to commend this report to council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannan. Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, mayor. I'll be really brief. Councillor Hannan's covered it really well. Just to add to the, I suppose, the changing legislative arrangements that we have in place now, climate risk is a specific overriding principle of the Local Government Act and I think it's worth mentioning it again because just this weekend, we of course saw a lot of speculation in the media about what happens in communities when you have significant climate risk and how that affects how people think. We don't form a risk management framework in terms of what the community thinks, we need to have it based on evidence, based on a sufficient analysis of genuine risk and the mitigating factors that we bring to the table. But our community expects us to be across the range of risks that our organisation and our community face and if we do not bring those into this framework, if we do not update our risk management framework in the context of emerging and current and future climate risk, then we are doing our community a disservice. So I commend the work of our officers, I commend not just the, obviously, the work that's gone into this, but also the work that they're actually doing every day to help mitigate risk. These risks and this framework and of course, the climate risk piece cuts across everything that council does now and I think it's worth saying that in relation to our aged care services, we have contact with people who are heat vulnerable. When it comes to our assets, we have a range of assets that we need to be conscious of and every decision that we make is now made through, I think, a climate risk lens and I just want to commend the work of our officers who were on to this stuff early and now, of course, this helps consolidate that work as well.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Are there any further speakers? I'll put that item onto the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, councillors, that's been carried unanimously. The next report we have to consider is item number 8.9, the governance report, May 2022. Do we have any questions to our officers? No questions, do I have a motion, councillors? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor Messina.
So are you moving the officer's recommendation?
Yes, I'm moving the officer's recommendation.
And councillor Lawrence, your hand was up. Are you seconding that motion? Thank you. Councillor Rennie?
Thank you. One of the things I like about the governance report is that every month, there's a different gem in there that's worthy of looking at and I like, rather than saying the same thing each month, to try and highlight something that's a bit different. This month, the thing that struck me as particularly pertinent and relevant and that community might be interested in is that the governance report includes a provision to endorse the extension of electoral advertising signage and electioneering policy for two years until May 2024. It may seem as though it's a bit past the time, but I think this is a really important policy and that's the point I wanted to make. What we've seen over the last month is some people feeling as though it's okay to plaster posters all over road space, all over the side of ovals, all over the bridge over Bell Street. Usually those posters were yellow and black. This was not attractive for our community, this was not helpful, this was not the type of thing we want our public spaces to become a giant billboard and it's this policy which provides the direction to staff to enable them to take this stuff down, to say not acceptable. So I'm really pleased that it's been extended for another two years. In that time, we'll have various elections, the next one coming up in November, and it sets, you know, clear boundaries and rules for all. The other thing I'd just highlight is that the quarterly report on council expenses is in this, there's not a lot to see there, but I think it is an important measure of the transparency of this council, that that is available to community members because ultimately it is rate payer money that pays for council allowances and other expenses such as mobile phones, internet and appropriate training for all of us. And, you know, I want to recognise that, you know, there is a cost. It's not significant in the scheme of the overall council budget, but I believe it's important that the community can look at it so that they can understand how that aspect operates. As usual, there's the summary of council activities and advisory committees and a summary of minutes of the Audit and Risk Committee and a few other things. So I commend this report to you and for people who are incredibly interested in governance, this is probably the most exciting part of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Councillor Lawrence?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Messina. Yeah, I was actually going to talk about the election rules and I just think we should highlight them to our very deeply involved community. They're pretty much the same as last time. I have to say, at state and federal and at local, people aren't exactly following it. People think some public land is open slather and we've seen that before and then people get creative, tie bikes to public land so that they're not tying it against the public land, but they're tying it to the bike that's land against the public land. So there's all those types of things. But it is important when we have, that we have the rules in place early, that we highlight that these are the rules and then maybe next time we'll have better compliance.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers? I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. The next item and report we have to consider this evening is item number 8.1, aged care reforms. I'm going to declare a conflict, a general conflict of interest based on this item due to my business interest in the aged care sector. I will now vacate the seat as chair and I'll ask the deputy mayor to take the seat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillors. So the aged care report, I'll just find my position here. So I'll just check, councillors, you've had an opportunity to ask questions in relation to this. I'm assuming that there are no questions, in which case I'll invite, if there's a resolution that a councillor would like to move, councillor Greco. Can you confirm are you moving the officer's recommendation? Thank you, councillor Greco. Councillor Dimitriades, you're seconding it? Thank you. Councillor Greco, over to you.
Thank you, acting chair. Yeah, look, councillors, here we have a report from our officers in relations to the aged care reforms and it's quite a detailed report and also provides us with a good update. The essential part of this report is that it moves the council in the direction of committing to becoming an aged care package provider and to ensure that in future we will continue to provide in-house services to our residents. This has come about because we have made a commitment in our council plan to register as a home care package provider. But what the report also points out is that given the reforms that the government is, will be introducing on the 1st of July 2023, that aged care packages will cease to exist and also what will cease to exist is the Goldwell Home Support Programme, which is the council's type programme where we get bulk funding, merging the two and creating a support at home programme of the federal government. So even though we're registering, we're registering as a home care package provider to position us in terms of future in providing services to our many residents and preparing the organisation of how it's going to meet the challenge of providing services to residents under the new programme, which is the support at home programme. So this is what this report refers to and I think it's timely that we do that and it provides signals, it makes a clear signal that council will remain in this space of providing home care services to our residents. There's over 3,700 residents that receive some form of home care service in our city so you can see the attraction and the demand that our service has. And finally, what I would say, councillors, is that it also provides certainty, not only to our clients, not only to our residents who admire the service that we provide, but also I think it provides certainty to the dedicated staff who on a daily basis provide quality home care services to our community. The level of quality that our staff provide in relation to home care services is perhaps unparalleled and in regards to, particularly in regards to the private sector. So what we're moving today actually sends a clear signal that we're going to stay in home care service, continue to provide the service and it provides a clear direction and certainty to our staff and the 3,700 people who receive our service.
Thank you, councillor Greco, just over time. Councillor Dimitriades, the seconda?
I'm happy to...
I'm happy to agree with what councillor Greco said.
Thank you very much councillor, I appreciate the brevity. Councillors, any speakers in favour or against? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Councillor Dimitriadis, councillor Williams, councillor Hannan, councillor Greco, councillor Rennie, councillor Lawrence and councillor Newton in favour, passed unanimously, thank you. Councillors, I'll ask-
councillor McCarthy, did you vote?
Sorry, and I voted myself, sorry, I was a little bit rusty councillors, and, and myself as well, voting in favour. That motion is passed and I'll ask if we can have councillor Messina return. Thank you councillors, thank you councillor Newton.
Thank you. Councillors, the next item we have to address is item number eight point one, eleven, Contract Award for CT two O two double one eight homelessness assertive outreach programme. Can I ask if there's any questions to the officers? Is there none? Can I have a motion councillors? Councillor Williams? Yep, did you want, before I ask for a second, I need to ensure what councillor Williams wants to insert?
To award the contract to, I've got-
It's on the screen.
Yeah, Mary Outreach Support Services, MOS, for one point one, sorry, one million one hundred and forty nine dollars, seven hundred and seventy eight, including GST for the contract to go till thirtieth of June twenty twenty five.
Thank you councillor Williams. Are you seconding that motion councillor? Rennie?
Yes, I am.
Councillor Williams would like to speak to the motion.
I'd just like to say a big thank you to our officers, particularly Jess, who works in this area and has so for many, many years. I know she's worked very hard. This comes off a back of a notice of motion that I brought to council back in two thousand and eighteen, where we were experiencing a lot of homelessness in the area. And we were trying to get many of our council assets open so those who were experiencing homelessness can have access to some council assets, including showering at our local gyms. Homelessness can be caused by a number of factors, including poverty, unemployment or affordable housing. It can also be triggered off due to family breakdown, mental illness, sexual assault, addiction, financial difficulties, gambling and other social isolation. And unable to afford essentials like housing and food, education, you're more likely to have increases to be homeless, whether it's short term or long term. I'm, I'm very grateful for the, the council officers' report this evening, as you can see that we're awarding the contract to Mary Outreach and what the purpose of this will do in to ensure that we will continue working with people who are experiencing homelessness. It will also, it aligns with our, our current council plans, including, sorry, including our ten big action supports, which is for vulnerable members of our community by providing support with COVID recovery and also expanding homelessness, a assertive outreach programme and supporting community-led programmes in the East Reservoir and East Preston to achieve greater physical and mental health. It also, as I said, it also aligns with our council plan, action plan, our Darabban Community Vision and the council plan strategy objectives, which relates to the Darabban Community Vision strategic, strategic direction for prosperous, livable and flourishing. I just want to also, oh no, that, that's about it, thank you, sorry.
Thank you councillor Williams. Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'd just like to add that this motion and this contract award is a very tangible demonstration of the commitment of this council to addressing equity concerns and disadvantage in our municipality. This is not a standard council offering across Victoria, and I think that's really worth noting, that if we go around other councils, we won't find them engaging assertive homelessness outreach programmes. It was because we recognised a need in our community and we said not good enough. An affluent society, an affluent community does not leave people unassisted when they're experiencing homelessness, whether that is rough sleeping or because they're couch surfing. And that it's a complex problem that requires skilled expertise. And the initial success of the programme over the first two years warranted its expansion. And I'm delighted that we have a skilled provider who can assist us and our community in this way. And I'd particularly like to thank the work of our team led by Jess Fraser, who has really made this such a success over the last couple of years. And I know we'll continue to work to ensure that every member of our community receives the support that they deserve.
Thank you councillor Rennie, I just want to echo those words. MOS is exceptional in our community and the work they undertake. Councillors, are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Messina, sorry, to speak out of turn, so to speak, but I think it really needs to be noted, this is a five-year contract. The success overseas in certain places, certain cities in the UK to actually address and eradicate rough sleeping is entirely dependent on the quality of partnership with outreach and services. So what we're doing here is world best practice and hopefully it's about putting in a permanent resource there to look at with the outreach workers, because around this city, people are couch surfing, people are, even in affluent parts of our city, people are sleeping in cars around the parks in Bandura and Reservoir. And people are even sleeping around this building, as we all know. So homelessness is very much with us now, unfortunately, and this excellent outreach service expanding here will put us in a good place to really tackle the problem.
Thank you councillor Lawrence, are there any further speakers? I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. Councillors, the next item on the agenda is item number eight point one five, sorry, yes, it is, eight point one five, no, it's not, I beg your pardon, eight point one two, I'm jumping way ahead. Darabban Creek Management Committee, MOU. Are there any questions to the officers? Are there are none? Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Dimitriadis?
I'd like to move the officer's recommendation.
Do I have a second? Councillor, councillor Lawrence, yes, thank you. Councillor Dimitriadis?
Thank you. I'm relieved this report is coming back to council after I raised it over a year ago with a positive resolution for Darabban Creek Management Committee and for Mary Creek Management Committee. Thank you to the officers for taking away the concerns of Darabban Creek Management Committee regarding their underpayment when compared to Darabban's commitment to the committee. And thank you to officers for investigating this and confirming that underpayment has occurred over the last few years for DCMC, as well as for the past year for Mary Creek Management Committee. Both these committees do very important work along the Darabban Creek and the Mary Creek respectively, and certainly deserve certainty and continuity with their dealings with council. I welcome the officer's recommendation regarding funding certainty and a plan for a three-year memorandum of understanding, rather than a series of short-term, one-year MOUs. And I hope all other councillors will support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dimitriadis. Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Messina, I'd like to congratulate the officers on bringing this report to us. And I certainly know speaking firsthand on the weekend with many of the volunteers and activists involved in Darabban Creek, that this is moved by the council, has actually been a great uplifting of the spirit of those people. And not to mention, of course, federal money that's been announced for both of our creeks in the federal election, which we now will see actually delivered. So Darabban loves, we love our creeks, our two main creeks and the smaller creeks, and people are taking action on the upper ends of Darabban Creek with new enthusiasm, new volunteers. And of course, Darabban Parklands itself is like really a beacon in Melbourne of how communities can transform degraded waterways. So I think we're going in the right direction now, and I think there's going to be a lot of exciting things in the next few years for Darabban Creek.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillors, I put this item for the vote. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously, thank you. Councillors, the next item for the, on the report to discuss is eight point one three, Kane Avenue and Hurst Bridge Train Line. Before I ask for a motion, are there any questions to the officers? There are none? Do I have a motion councillors? Councillor Hannan?
I'd like to put the, put the officer's motion, please.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councillor Williams. Councillor Hannan, would you like to speak to it?
It's a fairly straightforward recommendation. So I'll just be brief. I'd like to again thank councillor Dimitriadis for bringing this item to a previous meeting and the report tonight is a result from the motion at that previous meeting, to basically look into options to protect the land and the, and the people, the residents living around Kane Avenue, just on the south side there of the Hurst Bridge Line, next to Victoria Road. A lovely spot and a lot of kids play there and safety is of the utmost concern. I'd like to thank the staff who've had a good look at this, done the due diligence of what's possible and followed up with the state, state government authorities as to what may be possible. At the end of the day, this, this is state government land, it's not land that council controls, where council would be able to put in place its own fencing, for example. And the reality is, it's not a high priority, certainly for the state, to, to be putting in fencing or other safety measures there, unfortunately, and not really, not really feasible or at a prioritisation in terms of the budget, it would cost a lot of money for the return. And there's probably, there's a, there's a, unfortunately, a wide range of, a high number of places in, other places in Darabban where there are safety concerns, similar safety concerns or even higher safety concerns, which would probably be higher priority. So on that basis, the, the recommendation is not just to leave it, but to continue exploring those advocacy options, to see what may be possible for the, for the site. I'll leave it there, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannan. Councillor Dimitriadis? Oh, sorry, councillor Williams, I beg your pardon.
Yes, thank you. In reference to adjoining railway corridors, there's always seems to be a area for dumping rubbish, graffiti and a lack of maintenance. So I definitely look forward and thank the officers for their recommendation, which actually continues to advocate for increased investment by the state government into maintenance efforts and other improvements to state-owned land, including land adjoining railway corridors. As I said, it's a, it's been a huge issue for as long as I've been on council, it's constantly cleaning up the area, even though council does it, or even people from our public that volunteer to do that. It's not our land, it's not their land, it does belong to other levels of government and not ours.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? I'll now put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, this item's been carried unanimously. The next item we have to consider this evening is item number eight point four, one four, Contract Award CT two O two one one two eight, minor building trades and maintenance works. There is a conflict? Yep.
Thank you, mayor, as declared earlier, I have a conflict with this item. I know two tenderers who've tended for the works and I declared my conflict well before the tenders were evaluated.
Thank you. Councillors, do we have any questions to the officers? As there are no questions, councillors, do I have a motion? I actually saw councillor Lawrence's hand first. Councillor Lawrence?
Yeah, just move the officer's recommendation.
Do we have a second?
The inclusions.
Seconded by councillor Rennie. Councillor, councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Messina, do I need to read out each of the inclusions on this?
I just want to confirm that these are the right inclusions that you want to insert.
So I'm moving just the officer's recommendations with the following tenderers awarded, Harris HMC Interiors, PTY LTD, the trustees for the Building Impressions Unit, trading as Building Impressions, PTY LTD, Harris HMC Interiors, PTY LTD again in the second batch, and the trustees of the Building Impressions Unit and building, trading as Building Impressions, PTY LD, Eastern Property Services, PTY LD, the trustee for ABM Trust, trading as Arden Building Maintenance, and the trustee for Total Solutions, trading as Total Solution, Construction Maintenance Solutions. Just so that we're clear to everyone and the public here who we're awarding it to, this is very important that we do have panels and proper tenders for our maintenance. The buildings, not all our buildings are shiny and new, we have a great variety of buildings, and the amount of maintenance and that's required to maintain the asset base of this council is quite huge and obviously even gets quite problematic when even this building is in a flood zone. So it's very important that we have quality, quality contractors who are on hand and have locked into service provision when we need it. And I think the rest is covered in the reports.
Thank you, councillor, sorry councillor Rennie.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. I'd like to note that on the agenda, item number eight point one five, the naming of the show court with Nauru Stadium was listed. I will now direct the conversation over to Ms Olivier.
Councillors and members of the audience, I'd just like to advise that I've withdrawn this item from the meeting tonight, so it won't be discussed, it will come to council in due course, and it is a matter that can reasonably wait.
Thank you. Councillors, given that, we will now proceed to the next item, which is item number eight point one six, which is property matters. Do we have any questions to the officers regarding what's in the report? Do I have a motion councillors?
Mayor, I've got a motion, it's an alternative motion, which has been circulated, it was prepared with assistance from officers and councillors should have that.
As this is an alternative motion and we haven't entered into debate, I just want to confirm that is your alternative motion. Councillors, are there any questions to the officers in relation to the alternate motion before I ask for a second? As there are none, do I have a second councillors? Seconded by councillor Rennie. Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, mayor. Councillors may recall, and it is outlined in the report, that this matter came through, came to us, but it first, of course, went through a hearing of submission process. And councillors may recall that we received submissions from two of the submitters, two verbal submissions. Councillors, I've given this some consideration and I felt it was my duty in relation to the matters that we heard, but also the thought around the context of this site, that I maintain concerns about the proposal that is before us and hence my request that at this point in time, we abandon this process. We can always, as councillors would be aware, return to this process in the future. But I have serious concerns that have not only arisen from the submissions that we received, but also in relation to how we are thinking about the use of such laneways and such spaces in relation to development facilitation, particularly when it comes to developments that will have a potentially significant negative impact on surrounding properties. In this case, the question here is about whether we support the declaration of a road, you can see the very, very particular terms there, public highway declaration, the road, of course, adjoining between Kenwood Court, which is the former public housing site, as councillors would know, which is being incorporated as part of the development through the MAB Corporation. In this case, councillors, I would ask that council consider abandoning the process at this stage. The matters that have been raised by, by residents that are adjoining to the site- this stage. The matters that have been raised by residents that are adjoining to the site relate to the significant traffic movements that can be expected. There are projections in there, councillors, prepared by our officers. I'm not wanting to go into the detail of those nor to cast out on those projections but rather to say that I think there is a policy issue here in relation to the role that council plays in relation to facilitating significant traffic movements adjacent to people's homes and adjacent and along such roadways in this case that are not necessarily built with the sort of traffic movements that are in mind here. Councillors, you may recall that this is not a development that in fact we approved or that has come through this chamber. It's a development that in fact is out of our hands. The majority of the traffic movement in fact, as councillors would know, is actually from the Oakover Road entrance, sorry, the Shaw Street entrance I should say. So there is also the speculation about whether we will have the impact that is desired. At this stage, I have my doubts about what's proposed and therefore I'd like us to abandon it. That's probably enough for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rennie?
Just briefly, I'll say I share the concerns that councillor McCarthy has outlined and particularly that if were we to proceed, we effectively give a massive uplift to a private development that sees very little benefit for our community more broadly and actually could have significant amenity concerns. So it strikes me as a kind of quasi-privatisation of a laneway that's not really very much used at the moment and has very local usage. And it would create an uplift and enable greater density and more development at the expense of local residents without any equivalent benefit to the Darabin community more broadly.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Are there any further speakers? Councillors, I put this item to the vote. All those in favour?
Can I? Oh, sorry. I wanted to say something. I wanted to speak on this motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did, sorry. Are we tracked that?
Sorry, just a really quick note here. When we change officers' recommendations about things that we don't know, that we aren't experts in, it kind of brings back memories to when we did this about Fairfield Primary School and we were told that we weren't traffic experts, we weren't experts in the area. So I'm quite shocked that this is coming up again, a complete different, it's completely different to what the officers have recommended. I don't think we're experts in this area so I think there should have been more consultation about this or at least discussions with officers. This just came to us just minutes, hours before the meeting started. So I will not be supporting it. I'll be abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, we're going to put this item to the vote. All those in favour? That was councillor Hannon, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Newton, councillor Lawrence, councillor Rennie, councillor Greco. All those against? And note that councillor Dimitriades has abstained. That motion's been carried. Thank you. Councillors, the next item on the agenda is item number 8.17 Draft 10-Year Asset Plan. Are there any questions to the officers? No questions. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Hannon?
I'd like to move the officer's motion.
Do I have a seconda? Councillor Greco? Councillor Hannon, would you like to speak to it?
Briefly, thank you mayor. This recommendation is to endorse the 10-year asset plan after a committee consultation. It's a really important document. It's one of those documents which may be seen as boring but important. But in fact, I just want to pay credit to the council staff who brought it to life to make sure when we put it out for consultation that it actually had some good engagement. And if you go through the document, you'll see it steps out the different types of assets that we, that the council has and it's, I think it's over a billion dollars. It's a lot in various, correct me if I'm wrong please. Everything from footpaths, roads, buildings, sporting pavilions and sporting grounds, water, drainage etc. It's a huge responsibility that we have and it's really important that we have a strategic approach and that we use our money wisely. For example, so we don't go building two speedhumps within 10 metres of each other on outside schools or things like that. We have a commitment, a very important commitment to not only maintain the level of capital, the assets that we have in Darabin which is kind of non-negotiable. It just has to be kept up, otherwise the costs escalate and become greater. But also to invest in new infrastructure. And you can see if you go through the report, kind of the ratios and where there may be discretion and some of the principles for where there is discretion. One of the things I'm really pleased to see, I'd like to think councillor Greco has raised this point a number of times about where we have discretion, that should be favoured towards areas of disadvantage to use capital works to make sure there is a good level of investment across the city of Darabin but particularly in those areas where there has been historical disadvantage and it can be used along with all our social programming, programming but services that we provide to actually improve areas and change the face of Darabin. It's important that we have a long-term strategic plan, that we can set our priorities. These projects don't happen quickly. They take, you know, years in the development of the planning, tendering, the procurement.
10 seconds.
Construction and maintenance. And I think this plan will serve us very well for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannon. Before I go to councillor Rennie, I just want to note that I will ask for a procedural motion to extend the meeting for another half an hour. Moved by councillor Williams. Is there a seconda? Councillor Greco. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. Thank you. Over to you councillor.
Nothing to add, thank you mayor.
Can we, are there any further speakers on this item? Councillor Greco?
Thank you Mayor Messina. I think councillor Hannon has covered the purpose of the report quite well. Anything that I would say is that it's now become a requirement of the Act in order to ensure that councils are much more strategic in the way that they manage their assets and also in the way that they forward plan their capital works programmes. I would just make one observation which I'm, in relation to the, to what's been proposed and it's on page 438. And I look at the overall costs and the ratios that are associated with renewals, growth and maintenance. And I note that the ratios and the total capital works expenditure apart from next year, from 2014 onwards, it sort of centres around the $33 million mark and then it even goes below $30 million. And I'll be curious to see what the feedback is and from the community on whether we should be spending more in relation to capital works, given the growth, the population growth in the city and given the demands that come to us in relation to our assets and our facilities from libraries, sporting clubs, swimming pools and things like that. And I just raise that as an observation. Also, given that the council budget now is, gets to about $180 million and whether those ratios, particularly around the $30 million of capital works expenditure are appropriate. But I would be seeking further advice from officers and obviously looking at the feedback that we get from our community in regards to how we plan the future spend towards our assets.
Thank you councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? We'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's carried unanimously. The next item we have to consider is item number nine. Notice the motions. We don't have any notice of motions this evening. The next item we have to consider is item number 10 Urgent Business. Councillors, we've had one item of urgent business tonight. This item does comply with the governance rule insofar of its urgency and thus it can be subject of a procedural motion to admit this to the agenda. Councillor, the item concerns a council recognising the Festa della Repubblica and I seek a mover and a second for following the procedural motion into the chamber. This is that the matter of the Festa della Repubblica is admitted to urgent business. Do I have a mover and a seconda? That's moved by councillor McCarthy and second by councillor Williams. Councillor McCarthy? Oh, sorry, just a second. Now, I also need to put that on the screen and then I'm asking for a mover and a seconda.
Mayor, we might need to vote on the procedural motion.
Oh, we didn't. Sorry. All those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. Sorry. Can we please put the item of urgent business on the screen? Councillors, do I have a mover of the motion? Councillor McCarthy, do I have a seconda? Councillor Rennie?
Councillor McCarthy? Thanks mayor. I'll keep it brief. I will acknowledge your efforts in relation to bringing this to the chamber and also acknowledge the council has a broader piece of work around how we work through which flags and when and how and how we negotiate all those sorts of things. However, just in relation to this one, there's obviously been a request there to have that recognition in this case. I think it's absolutely fine based on governance' advice for us to both admit it to the matter as an urgent item but also to, in this case, give this one support. But then of course broadly, we will be working towards a broader piece of work around so that we don't actually have to have motions for these sorts of things in future. And I look forward to resolving the broader policy point, mayor. And that's probably enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rennie?
Nothing to add, thank you mayor.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you Mayor Messina. Look, just in relation to this motion, I think that the question of flags is a really vexed question. I am from an Italian background, you know, as it's been given by my name. And it really becomes, because we have 148 different nationalities in our city and the question then becomes whether this provides, gives a precedent, you know, provides a precedent then for other communities to equally have, you know, to request this gesture on the part of council. I don't have any problems about obviously because, about expressing the multicultural nature of our city. It's something that I've been a strong advocate for the last 40 years. I will be supporting this motion but I just want to alert councils that the precedent that it may create.
Yep.
And that that will need to be carefully managed because then it's a really difficult area to be in, in my experience involved in multicultural affairs. You don't want it to be an area where there's one community has had this provision and then another community does not get that provision. So we have to really tread carefully in relation to these things. I've never moved a motion of this nature before in council over the 13 years that I've been on council because I think it's best to express the multicultural nature of the council in its totality and the unity and how diversity brings unity. But given that the motion now has been scaled back to what it is about the raising the flag and just recognising Republic Day of Italy, I think we can go ahead with that. But again, we'll have to have a careful discussion amongst us about how the policy should be pursued in future.
Thank you councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? Councillors, I know we look forward to a framework for flag raising in the future and I think that report, I've been patiently waiting for that report and I look forward for that coming into this chamber so we can address those concerns. So councillors, as there are no further speakers, I put this item to the vote. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. The next item to consider this evening is consideration of reports considered confidential. Councillors, we have two reports considered confidential this evening. That's item number 11.1 Review of lease arrangements for Sullivan Stadium, 21 Blackstreet, Preston and associated matters. And item number 11.2 Appointment of the insurance broker. In accordance with section 66.2 of the Local Government Act 2020, council may resolve to close the meeting to members of the public to consider the item designated confidential by the acting chief executive officer in accordance with section 3.1 of the Act. Councillor, is there a mover for this recommendation? Councillor Rennie? Second by councillor Williams. All those in favour? That's been carried. Thank you councillors. I now can confirm to the, I declare that the meeting is closed to the public at 10.06pm and request that officers cease live streaming.